I will call to order the August 10, 2009, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Would the Secretary call the roll, please? Nancy Pease? I'm sure she's in transit. Jim Frederick?
Here.
Connie Yoshimura?
Here.
Tony Jones?
Here.
Arthur Eishem?
Here.
John Weddleton?
Here.
Bruce Phelps? Nancy Pease?
Here.
Okay, we are all present. Okay, and we have no minutes this evening, so the next item before us would be disclosures. Mr. Eishem.
Ms. Pease, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
I do have a couple of photos that I got from someone showing some of the cases of large development in residential areas that I was aware of, and I will share them with the board of the commission.
And also a disclosure that you are leaving the meeting at 10:00 tonight. Yes, just as a reminder to all of us.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Frederick, do you have anything this evening?
No.
And Ms. Yoshimura?
No.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Mr. Phelps?
Nothing, but I want to make, I guess, a point of order. I think I need to be excused from this meeting and abstain. I wasn't here for the public hearing and not only received any of the minutes, and so I'm not going to be prepared for this particular issue at all. So for those reasons, I wish to abstain and be excused this evening.
Ms. Jones, I'm going to let you answer that one, because that's not really a disclosure. That's, it seems to me, that's sort of a question on, you know, attendance and whether we were given the minutes and things of that nature.
Right. I did discuss this briefly with Mr. Phelps, and he has not been provided the minutes for the public hearings on this, and I think it was known that he was absent and routinely on these matters where they're ongoing, and we know they're going to be ongoing. Commissioners should routinely be provided the tapes so that they can participate in future proceedings. And I don't know why you weren't provided the tapes for this. It apparently just fell through the cracks. But in light of that, I don't know that we can force him to participate at this point.
Right, but I still think what we'd better do is we'd better direct him to the state actually and go through a vote.
Right, and then vote against it.
Right, so I'll entertain a motion, a positive motion for Mr. Phelps to participate. So moved. Okay, thank you.
And it's been seconded by Mr. Weddleton.
Very good. Okay, basically, a yes vote directs Mr. Phelps to participate, and a no vote excuses him from due to the fact that he did not participate in the public hearing, nor did he get the minutes or anything of that nature. So...
We really need to probably press on their record.
We really use our machines.
Okay, it looks like you are excused with Ms. Yoshimura voting for you to participate.
Oh, my. Just, this is a point, though, that they shared known previously, is that when these things are carried over, we need to receive minutes. They can't, the staff can't assume that we're all up to speed in this stuff, particularly when it happens like months before, so, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Yoshimura?
I think I have the same problem. Because I wasn't here for the public hearing.
And you haven't listened to the tapes?
No.
Or the minutes?
No.
Well, maybe it was a very short meeting.
Well, let, I'll come back to you, Ms. Yoshimura. Let me finish coming this way, and then we'll go that way again. Mr. Weddleton, do you have anything to discuss?
No disclosures.
And I have none. Ms. Yoshimura, now, you, I guess this happened even before you were on the board, I believe, so, and you didn't receive any of the, okay. I think we'd better do the same thing for you that we did for Mr. Phelps. So I'll entertain a positive motion to direct Ms. Yoshimura to participate. Mr. Frederick, you moved.
Moved again.
John, Mr. Weddleton, you seconded it. Again, a yes vote directs Ms. Yoshimura to participate, and a no vote excuses her. Please vote.
Well, you get to go home, Ms. Yoshimura.
Okay.
One, two, three.
Our apologies.
They can't go home now. They have to sit in the cell, don't they?
No.
What?
Well, this is the only thing on the...
Can I change my disclosures?
Mr. Weddleton.
Can we move to the end if she has to stay?
No.
Actually, it was intere, it was interesting. I wanted to stay. But no, it's appropriate that I'm off. All right.
Really. Okay, now, the public hearing has already been closed on this, and now we have before us for consideration the original packet that we received a few days ago. We have the comments received from Mr. Weddleton and Ms. Pease today. Then we have a comparison chart that we received between the proposed code and the current code, or received from staff today. And then we have a new commercial and large design standards testing for today. And I think it might be appropriate if Ms. McConnell kind of does some explaining.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are two sections to review tonight, and the second one has actually been split into two, so it's really three sections that are part of the commercial and large development design standards. The first one is Section 2107120. It's been renumbered, so in the past it would have been 110. And it is design standards that would apply to all public institutional and commercial development, with some exceptions that are noted in the applicability section. It is divided up into, the standards that you have to meet vary by the size of your building. And depending on the size of your building, you have to meet a number of standards that are offered in menus. So for each kind of topic area, there's a menu of choices. And then again, sorry if I'm repeating myself, the number of standards you have to meet in each menu depends on the size of your building. This has been an iterative process that we've been working out through since the very beginning. The first standard was prepared back in 2004, and I think the menu-based approach was developed in public review draft number one, and we've been revising it since then based on public comments, based on staff testing. And as you'll note tonight, there are amendments offered to the public hearing draft based on further testing. The purple document, Commercial and Large Commercial Design Standards Testing, does give you two tests of regular commercial development and two tests of large commercial development, what we think of now as big box. That leads me to the second section, which is 2107130. This was originally large commercial development. It carries forward yet hopefully improves upon, certainly clarifies today's big box ordinance, the big box standards that were passed in 2001. Many of them, the commissioners worked with them because big box developments do come to the commission for a public hearing site plan. And I'm interested to hear the commission's opinion, but certainly from reading them, we see some vagueness, and we have tried to correct that by offering more measurable standards. The kind of second half of that section, if you think back to when we were working on Chapter 5, which was the list of uses and all the districts that those uses were allowed in, we had a lot, we had testimony and comments from commissioners about concerns with large, non-residential development that was going into residential districts, and how it was out of scale, the intensity was out of scale, and it was having a lot of impacts on these residential districts. And it was requested that we put standards in to address this, and there are a lot of recommendations for standards, and they're particularly talking about things like churches and schools. Those are two of the most major types of developments that you see in these areas. Rather than putting specific standards into all the various uses, non-residential uses that you could have in your residential areas, we took the approach that was similar to the commercial standards, that once you meet a certain size threshold for all these types of uses, you then have to meet these additional standards. So this is a new section, and it applies to those non-residential uses that are allowed in your large lot residential areas, so your R63 or R10. And I'm sure we'll have some interesting discussion about that. So those are the main three sections in the commercial section, or the commercial and the large development section that are on the agenda tonight. The very last thing was a carryover from the residential section, where we had left reserved a section called multiple structures, multiple residential structures on a lot. And you will have hopefully noted from a memo that we provided last week that our recommendation for that section is to require that multiple residential structures on a lot go through the PUD process. And I'm sure we'll have a lot to talk about with that as well. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. McConnell or Mr. Davis at this time?
Are you going to make a present, are we going to get a presentation on this packet? Is that the pictures?
Were you planning to give a presentation on the purple packet?
We'd be happy to. I'm going to have Mr. Davis start with the first two commercial developments.
Yes, Madam Chair, the two commercial developments that would be subject to Section 120, Commercial and Public Institutional Design Standards, are sites that, you may recall, they are from the economic impact analysis, and last December, you all received the results of that economic impact analysis on variety of retail developments. These were two among them. The Bicycle Shop on Diamond, and then secondly, the shops at 110 West Tudor. Each site in the packet, there, each of these two sites in a package starts with a page of photographs, and then, similar to what we provided you with the multifamily developments, basically a checklist. The checklists we provide are on basically the three different types of menus that apply to these types of developments in Section 120. First is the building and site orientation. Secondly, it would be the massing and articulation. And then on the third page, the third page of the checklist for each northern design, one being for pedestrian protection from the weather, and secondly, sunlight and access and wind protection, sunlight and wind. For the Bicycle Shop on Diamond, that is an example of a development that's basically less than 7,000 square feet of floor area. So this is a, this is a development that would only be required to provide two features for building orientation, for the building orientation menu. So that first checklist you see there is basically corresponds to the building orientation menu on page, bear with me, page five of the track changes document, the August 10 draft. And so each of those menu items from page five going forward to page six appears, here is a checklist, and then its performance is basically summarized. It does well particularly where it provides windows facing the street. The smaller street on the corner is Vernai Place, and the windows there comprise most of the facade. The windows comprise a fair amount of the facade of the diamond facing a street, the street elevation. And I apologize, I wasn't able to actually reach the site to measure the exact distance percent of the windows, but it may be a little bit underneath the, what would be the minimum requirement in terms of windows as a percent of the overall facade length, that being the goal to make a street-oriented building. Another shortcoming on the diamond facade might be the lack of screening for the utility meters. But overall, for building orientation, they do, this building does comply. For the massing, the building is small enough to where it doesn't have to provide any menu items under the first menu for building massing and articulation. And so you see there in the massing menu that it basically complies even though it doesn't provide any massing features. It's basically a small building, and by being small achieves the goal of a more of a small-scale massing. Facade surface articulation, it basically doesn't provide any. Had it provided two, it would comply. There are a variety of choices that it could have chosen from, and we don't, we would have been difficult, but you can see this is a very simple building. Lastly, northern design. The building, by being so small, so short, it automatically doesn't have wind or solar impacts. It complies with that lower menu. Had it provided, for example, over its customer entrance, basically a canopy, like many buildings provide, and one other feature from among these, it could have complied. There may be also a lot of things that the builder could have done, the architect could have done, had he designed the building knowing about these standards. But mostly because there wasn't a canopy or other weather protection in the customer entrance, that building didn't comply with that one menu. The shops at 110 West Tudor provide an example of a building in a range of between 7,000 to 25,000 square feet. It's a retail building near the corner of Tudor and C on the south side of Tudor. It also is a good example of a building that's taken a little bit more efforts at articulating itself, and so there's more careful attention paid to providing features in the building that provide interest on the street along Tudor. So this was an interesting test to see how this type of building would fare under the standards. A building orientation, a building this size would need to have three features, and this building didn't actually do very well. The primary reason is that this building is set back from the street by parking lots. So to do well under the site orientation, this building would have had to interface with that, you know, with one of the, with one of the three streets or at the corner of two of those streets by moving itself forward towards that corner or towards one of the streets. And in this case, the building is completely surrounded by drive aisles and parking, and so it did not do well as well as say, for example, the recent Walgreens Pharmacy on Huffman, which recently went through a rezoning process. It pushed itself to the street and focused its, more of its parking to the side. That type of site orientation would do much better for a building with the combination of walk-in retail and drive-throughs like this building. The building did very well in terms of its windows and its street-oriented entrances, and it just barely did not comply on one of the facades for windows. Had it been so, on that one facade, it would have achieved two of the three features right off, even though it was parked far away from the street. Massing, lastly, excuse me, the massing and articulation of this building was a more interesting test. It would be required to have one overall massing feature. The feature that it did receive credit for is roof forms, and you can look at the photos and see those two large roof forms that meet the criteria. Interestingly enough, it did not comply with the wall modulation requirement. The reason being is that several of the commissioners noted that 12, a minimum of 12-foot-deep modulation, as written in the draft, seems rather large, and in fact, this building does have 10-foot-deep modulation. So taking into account the comments of the two commissioners and the results of this test, and the suggestions by the commissioner to somehow relax the modulation requirement, we have taken a look at that, and once we get to that standard in the draft, we can show you a proposed additional modulation choice that could help ameliorate this. For articulation, now, building articulation has more to do with the detail interest at the pedestrian level. The overall building mass isn't being broken down to the human scale, but a variety of features, whether it's facade, colors and materials, or pedestrian scale lighting or what have you, are being brought to bear in this case. And a building of this size would be required to provide three features on each of the street-facing facades. And you see Tudor facade, A Street facade, and a private street, Union Drive facade. So this building is fighting on three facades to provide street-facing articulation. And it's, aside from minor shortcomings along the Union Drive facade, it does rather well on each of the facades. There was some lack of clarity about whether it achieved the base, middle, and top menu choice from that menu. However, we believe the building would basically comply. Lastly, that northern design, the two features would be required for pedestrian protection. The, one of the, the building does provide a lot of canopies, and it did receive credit for that at the top. In addition, it provided a weather-protected transition space, basically a seating area for the, for the coffee shop with the Starbucks. The seating area was smaller than would be required by the Title 21 rewrite, and it also basically blocked the pedestrian walkway access to the other stores from the street. For these reasons, while it did provide a transition space, it didn't quite meet the criteria and get a check mark for it. And we believe that that's probably a case of where the proposed code is actually working, where if the designer had been aware of the standard, they could have designed for it and provided at least a clear pedestrian walkway that's not blocked by tables and chairs to the rest of the stores from the street. And the sunlight access, again, it's a short building, and it complies. So it was a useful exercise for the, for the standards in 120, and it led to us looking at several possible corrections that we can discuss tonight.
Thank you. I have Ms. Pease in the queue. Thank you for waiting.
Yes, I just, I just wanted to point out, I'm a little bit puzzled by the fact that the bike shop gets credit for four-sided design when it's pretty much of a minimalist building, and in fact, look at the pictures. The one side, I believe it would be the east side, I can't see any windows on it. But anyways, they, their plane basically doesn't have articulation, and yet it gets credit for that consistency, whereas this shops at Tudor has three livery sides, and yes, it does have a blank rear, so I understand it's not four-sided, but by being so plain and doing such a plain design on all four sides, I wonder whether we really want to be rewarding that.
Yes, through the chair, that is a good question, and it is rather ironic that the building that didn't provide any articulation did get credit for that item. I guess our response would be that because it did not provide any articulation features, the building, the bicycle shop, even though it got credit for four-sided design, it would not have passed, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have passed, it wouldn't have been able to comply and get credit overall for the menu. Whereas the other building, even though it didn't get credit, it would have passed. Basically, what we did was, we read the orientation, excuse me, the four-sided design provision. Basically, that followed it to the letter, and yes, the building was consistent all the way around. But we recognized that irony, and we would be open to suggestions.
Thank you.
Are there further questions from anyone? No one? Okay. Well, then I guess we're ready to go to work.
We have one more building.
Excuse me?
There's another building in the packet here.
Madam Chair, the other two buildings in the packet are the large commercial, and I'm wondering if you want to wait to talk about those until we reach that section.
That's fine. Yeah. Okay. Well, let's see how far we can get.
Madam Chair, I think we probably maybe ought to go into committee of the whole to wiggle our way through this thing.
I think so.
Okay, so I mean that we go into committee of the whole?
Is that our second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any objection? Apparently not. We are now in the committee of a whole. Okay. Where do we want to begin, Mr. Eishem?
I'm thinking what we ought to do is just...
Go through it.
Just go right through it, and anytime you see something yellow or something that comes up on the comments from Mr. Weddleton and Mr. Weddleton, or from either the other three of us, then we just work our way through it.
Okay, so we'll start with the first section here, 2107120A. There is just a word change there. Let me get both Ms. Pease and Mr. Weddleton's line set out.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I probably should have mentioned this in my beginning statement, and I apologize for not doing that, but I wanted to touch on the schedule briefly. The Assembly Committee is this month taking up the residential standards, and it will be ready to take up the commercial standards in September, starting on their meeting of September 9. So I just wanted to let the commission know that if recommendations are not made tonight, there would need to be a special meeting to finish up before the end of this month.
Or if there's not a special meeting, they'll get however far we've gone tonight.
Exactly.
And that'll be it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All right. Anything?
Assembly.
Is everyone okay with A, the proposed change in, in twenty-one oh seven, one twenty A? Okay, moving on. I don't hear any.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I pushed my request to speak, and I think I'm on the right issue, since there's no other issue.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, I propose to, rather than give a blanket exemption to special purpose facilities such as schools, airports, and fire stations, to substitute the wording "may be granted specific variances" if the director, I lost my place, finds substantial public benefit and adequate mitigation of impacts to the immediate neighborhood. And it just seemed to me that schools are, these are all, schools and airports, of course, are very large institutions, and they, I, I'm just not sure that on things like, you know, buffers for the, screening the wall-mounted equipment, that sort of thing, they'd need a blanket exemption. I would rather that they try to comply with the standards of the community, and certainly there's an invitation here, if they need an exemption, to request one.
Mr. Weddleton, did you wish to comment on that?
I had a question on that for staff then, is, can the director give variances, or do you have to go through Zebra or something to get a variance?
It wouldn't be, my understanding of the wording is that it wouldn't be a variance with like a capital V through the variance process, but, but basically that the director would be authorized to allow a, a modification of the standard, which would basically be a small v variance.
So you could say exemptions from this?
That might be better.
Well, that is an amendment, saying instead of variances, exemptions, would that work?
Yes. As long as it's specific exemptions.
Right.
So it's not blanket. And then the rest of the language is okay with you? Substantial public benefit, inadequate mitigation of impact?
Yeah, I was just worried about the technical
Thank you.
definition of variance.
Okay, Mr. Isham, you're next in the queue.
I agree with this. I think it's, it's sensible, because I believe our public facilities need to set the example. You know, we don't want to have, don't do as I do, do as I say type thing. I, I think that it's important. And because it's left to the director, it doesn't have to come to us, it, it's something that, that he can establish.
And if Monsieur Shemiro were here, sitting at the table, she would be saying those exact words. So I will speak up to, yes. Ms. Pease, did you want to chime in again on this?
No, I think
Okay.
Mr. Weddleton's change was good, so.
Okay. So everyone concurs with that change?
And then there's an or down there at the bottom on line nineteen.
Yes. And or. Okay. No objection to those? Okay. Now we substituted the word exemptions for variances between lines fifteen and sixteen.
Madam Chair, that isn't what I understood.
Where did you understand?
It's, that's the, the location, but I thought we were going to put in "may be granted specific exemptions."
Yeah.
Yes, I have that. "May be granted specific exemptions from this section if."
Yes, and then if.
Yes. I got it.
Okay. I thought I would use the word variances again, sorry.
No, instead of variances. Cancelled out, I have it scratched out. Okay. With changes. With B has been changed with changes. With additional changes.
Can you give the secretary a copy of these things so she knows? You got it, okay.
I'm following along with that.
Did.
Okay. C. I have no changes to C. Let me look at Mr. Weddleton's.
Well, mine, mine's actually the next one.
Okay. Okay, nothing on C. And I don't hear any objection. D.
I had a brief question for staff on that.
Okay.
So, and would that preclude big plastic structures on I-1 and I-2?
No, it says specifically, "I prohibit it in all commercial and mixed-use districts."
Commercial doesn't mean industrial?
No.
Okay.
They would be allowed in industrial districts.
All right, good, thanks.
Okay. We're still on page one, on page two, excuse me. So we've got D-1. There's the change to D-1, where it talks about fabric structures rather than inflatable domes, and then all of that added language in yellow. Is there any problem with that?
Do you have a question for?
Okay.
Would that have prohibited that golf driving range? Any number of years ago?
I do not believe so, because I believe that's in a PLI district.
Oh, okay.
And the other large inflatable dome is, the change point churches in an industrial district.
Okay. No objection on D-1. D-2, the rooftop mechanical equipment, have, with the addition of "have a minimum height not less than the height of the mechanical equipment." Well, I think that's a no-brainer. We don't intend to squish it down. Okay? And D-3, wall-mounted mechanical equipment. Any problem with that? I don't hear any.
Just a question that I have for staff. In regards to the, you say screening can be provided by trees or shrubs, are you, does this take into consideration that that tree or shrub is going to grow? I mean, it may start out small and not cover the equipment, but in five years, it may be big enough to cover it. So, or does it have to be big enough to cover it right away?
It doesn't specifically address that, but I think common sense would prevail in that we often use landscaping for screening, and we recognize that, you know, when it's baby, it, it doesn't necessarily perform the screening function immediately.
And maybe I would say screening shall be provided by trees or shrubs when mature, or something like that.
At maturity. Pick your words, Mr. Isham.
At maturity.
Okay.
And it comes after shrubs. Screens provided by trees or shrubs at maturity.
Do you have that, Madam Secretary? Okay, at maturity.
Line forty-two.
Yes. Anybody object to that? I didn't think so. Okay, Mr. Weddleton?
Oh, no, I, I spoke, sorry.
You spoke? Okay. Great, now we're going to turn the page to page three. And there's the little B up at the top. This is more to do with wall-mounted mechanical equipment. That extends six inches or less from the outer building wall shall be designed to blend in with the color and architectural design of the subject building. Hmm.
No big deal.
Any problem with that?
Can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Um, oh, staff, have you got some concept of what that implies or infers, as far as, does that mean, for example, taking the example of the bicycle shop, if they had painted the utility equipment to match the building? I'm not sure what, what would, what would be acceptable, is my question. Honestly, I'm not sure that you can paint utility equipment. Do you know that?
Yeah. Yeah, there might be some regulations that would prohibit that.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if you have an idea what might qualify.
I guess, through the chair, the equipment there on the bicycle shop would, I'm pretty sure it's more than basically six inches. These are boxes, they'd basically be subject to A. And A would be where they would be asked to be screened by side-skirting structure or some shrubs. Whereas B really points to things like pipes or minor things like that. So instead of having metal-colored pipe, it'd be somehow work to blend in to the building.
Everybody happy with the little B at the top of page three?
Well, now I'm worried. Did, did, um, did you have this checked, like with building inspectors, and that, that this is allowed to, are you allowed to block those in any way?
This wouldn't be blocking them, it would generally be painting them, you know, pipes or screening grates, those sorts of things. I mean, those are, you see those painted?
You know, inside my store, where I have fuse boxes that operate in there, I'm not allowed to have anything, I think it's three feet in front of it, I can't hang merchandise or anything. And that's, you know, if the fire code person comes in, I get nailed. And I'm thinking, boy, these things probably equally important, you know, if something happens. I, I don't know the rules, but it'd be bad to be recommending something that's not allowed.
Yes, through the chair, the commission in reviewing the residential multifamily, excuse me, the townhouse, suggested and added a, a rider to the wall-mounted screening provisions of, of the townhouse, excuse me, for multifamily. And it read, "All screening shall comply with the utilities' access and safety requirements." Perhaps that type of language or something similar could be added here so that we aren't somehow crossing some basic fire code, building code, utility code.
Yeah, I'd look for that.
Because clearly, any fire code or building code would, would prevail. You can't supersede them with your land use code. Mr. Isham?
Just a comment. When I remodeled our house, I, I called the gas company and asked them if I could paint their gray meters, and they said, yeah, just don't paint over the part where you read. And other than that, they said, yeah, you can paint any color you want. But, but, you know, they have to be able to read the thing, that's all.
But each utility, you know, might have their own rules.
I would suggest for line three, that you, after building, we put in accordance with local utility regulation or something like that.
Okay. Ms. Pease? Whoops, okay. Maybe something, yeah, something to, with the, uh, local building codes, you know, or fire codes or something. Where would you put that, Mr. Isham?
I'd just put it after, uh, "wall-mounted," shall be designed to blend in with the color and architectural design of the subject building, in accordance with, uh, local, local codes or existing, existing codes, I would guess, maybe. Code.
In accordance with existing code, does that make?
Or, or you, or utility, yeah, existing utility and safety codes or something like that? Okay.
Mr. Davis, can you reread what we did for the multifamily? I mean, that sounded pretty good, if we just repeat what we did last time.
Yes, through the chair. We created a subsection C, and so that it would apply to both A and B, both the large equipment screening and the minor screening, minor paint. And that subsection C read, "All screening shall comply with the utilities' access and safety requirements."
Well, maybe that would be the thing to do, would be to add that same C.
In accordance with local utility and safety requirements.
Yeah. What do you think?
That's fine.
Okay. Rather than adding what you had proposed, Mr. Isham? Is that fine?
Yes.
Okay. Does everybody understand what we're doing as we're adding a new C? From the multifamily. Okay. From multifamily. Okay, now we're on to four. And we do have some issues here. Four. Mr. Weddleton, on four?
I think we got a four A for Commissioner Pease.
Four A.
And the wind impact.
Okay, the wind impact study and its mitigation.
Through the chair, my changes are for four A and four B, the same change, and it's really just tidying up the last sentence, which isn't a sentence, it's just an isolated clause. So I think it should say, "The design measures are," and then the wording, "subject to approval by the director," and then insert the words "to ensure efficacy." And I would make that change for both the last line of four A and the last line of four B. And I would assume that staff would just consider that housekeeping.
Okay, is there any objection to that?
What does efficacy mean?
They're effective.
Effective.
Okay, we'd say, we could say effectiveness if you prefer.
Why don't we use simple words that guys like me understand?
If that's fine with me.
Okay, I think the average citizen would understand effectiveness.
You want that at the end of, oh, I see, A and B, okay, I see. You have that incomplete sentence.
Subject to approval by the director to ensure effectiveness. Period. Okay?
Actually had on there, um, D-4B, and actually, my comment is on section D-4CII.
Okay.
On line thirty through forty-one, and because I just wasn't crystal clear on the wording, so I offered some different wording, and I, I don't know, leave it up to staff. Does my wording make it clear, or is it just me?
Staff agrees with the amendment.
So would this be substitute language for lines thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one?
Correct. Part of line thirty-eight, that sentence. Places the last sentence.
So the, it would, the la, okay, from the maximum planned dimensions for the, from there on, it would.
Correct.
Okay, is there any objection to substituting that language in C, little two I's? There are none? Oh, Ms. Pease, you wanted to talk?
So?
Are you wanting to talk?
No.
No. All right. And Mr. Weddleton, your next item is in D-4C, the three I's.
Now, this is a similar issue where I, I worked through the language, it wasn't crystal clear, so I offered some wording that my understanding has the same meaning, but is more clear, except that I don't really understand what a daylight plane that rises inward means.
Y'all this?
Daylight plane or plan?
Yes, the language is somewhat confusing. Unfortunately, the, the way it's stated is, at the moment, about the best we can think of that still is accurate to the intent. What we propose is to, to go forward with the language in the draft and to recommend there be an illustration. The illustration being passed out to you right now is primarily for purposes for tonight, but what we would propose is that this particular standard be accompanied by an illustration. The language is consistent with the way daylight plane is presented in the is presented in the provisionally adopted chapter six, height transition section. So, it is something that's described in a similar way and illustrated elsewhere earlier in the code. And it appears here in basically the same wording format. I'll buy it a little bit, maybe a little cockeyed. But it's, I basically recommend staying with that. And the difference being that the sixty feet isn't intended to be the point at which the building step back begins. It's intended to be the point in height at which this daylight plane would be in effect. The building could be lower than fifty, sixty feet. So, we would recommend there be an illustration added.
Okay, Mr. Weddleton?
That works for me. And I, just to echo what Mr. Davis said, I do support as much as possible using the same language for any particular sections throughout. And I made a couple of comments later that were, the goal was to do that. Okay, this is good, thank you.
Okay.
On line forty-five, you need to make sure it says plane instead of plan.
Okay. So, now, the next that we have. Yes, Ms. Pease?
Before we go further, looking at Mr. Weddleton's language change to small roman numeral three, did we approve his language rises from north to south? Are we not there yet?
We just left it the same.
We left it as it was, thank you.
Yes, that's, yes, because staff explained it adequately.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You've been looking at Mr. Weddleton's and Ms. Pease's amendments, and you've skipped over some of the proposed yellow and gray language. Can I assume that if nobody calls it out, that you're all fine with it?
If nobody's bringing, when we're on a paragraph, if nobody is taking exception to what's in yellow, as far as I'm concerned, they're okay with it.
That's great. That should keep things moving more efficiently, too. Thank you.
We have to speak up, and this gavel is moving right along tonight because we have to get done with it or we're not going to get our recommendations to the assembly. All right. So, now, on page three, I've jumped back to Ms. Pease. On page three A, did we, oh, we dealt with that. Page three and four, consider, okay, we did that. Page. Page four for Mr. Weddleton. You have some confusion on five B, little?
No, I think that is taken care of with the diagram.
And then, page four, twenty-seven B, is that taken care of?
Twenty-seven, where am I here? This is line twenty-seven, where am I here?
Adversely. That are materially.
I think I got the wrong, did I have the wrong line number on there?
Or the wrong page?
No, you're fine.
Oh, I'm on page five, okay, don't mind me.
Is that page five?
I would say, I mean, maybe materially, they'd make the property more valuable, and that wouldn't bother anyone.
Okay, which pa, is that page four?
Page four, line twenty-seven.
Line, well, my page, oh, good grief, I'm on page three. No wonder it's not, good grief. Does not materially, and you're suggesting adversely. Effect. Okay. Any comments on that? Any problem with that? No, I see staff nodding their head, no. Any problem with anybody else? No, that's changed to adversely. Mr., okay. You wanted to speak, Mr. Weddleton?
I, well, I have.
I know you have more.
We have a specator, which you don't usually have. But I don't know if, did you want to see some of it? We might have copies of the paperwork we're looking at that you could get and scroll through with us.
Okay, well, you're welcome to sit and watch us work away.
This is in your municipal code?
Yes. Well, it's proposed, it's proposed new municipal code, new standards for commercial development in Title 21. And we've already held the public hearing, and we're working through our recommendations. Okay? You're sure, well.
Making sausage.
Yeah, this is what we call making sausage. Okay, so, on page four, lines twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Do you have, was this a question for staff?
That's just a question for staff, no. You with us?
Well, on that one, it says, "The design innovation shall not be used to satisfy the minimum requirement, minimum required number of design features in a menu if the minimum requirement is one design feature." Why not?
The thinking is that we've tried to craft the design features to address issues that we think are very important. And so, if there's only one design feature necessary to achieve the menu because of the size of the building, we think that they should address one of these features that we've identified as very important. If there are extra ones, you know, it's fine that they can propose some kind of mini alternative equivalent compliance. But if there's only one required, we'd like them to address one of the important features we've identified.
What I consider with that is that if someone is like very, very creative, comes up with something that just wasn't thought of, I hate to stifle that.
Well, that is the complete alternative equivalent design option as well.
And that can be done with the director's approval? In any case, that correct?
That is approved by whoever the decision-making authority would be. So, if it's a bylaw use, yes, it would be the director's approval. If it is a major site plan of yours, it would come to the Urban Design Commission, you know, that sort of thing.
Okay, that's fine, then, thanks.
Okay. So, that picks here, and did you, let's see, there's nothing else on page. On page four, there, in paragraph E, up on, starts at line five, there was a word change in line ten. Is there any problem with that? I don't hear any. And then, down in, on line twenty-six on that same page, there was the changing the word "the" to "a." That line begins, "Result from application of a basic menu choice and," and it would remove the word "the" and change the word "choices" to "choice." Any problem with that change? Okay, that one is okay. We're moving on to page five.
Well, actually, I had on that table on page four. Sorry.
Oh, okay.
And in that case, for this table, it talks about buildings greater than 25,000 square feet. But we give them a whole new section. Should that be yanked out of here?
The second section only applies to certain uses, the retail type uses, whereas this applies to all commercial uses. So, you could have a use that applies here, but not in the other section.
Okay. Good, thanks.
We're good?
Yeah, appreciate that.
All good? Okay, so, now, we're moving on to page five. Okay, let me check out the comments here. Sorry, John, I hadn't turned my page yet and saw about the table. Page five, John has things and Nancy has things. So, we'll go to Nancy's list first. Okay, Ms. Pease, line?
Yes, Madam Chair. It just, maybe staff can clarify, but I thought that pedestrian amenities generally referred to but things, not displacement of a building. And so, I thought it was clearer to say that we're framing the street corner with that pedestrian-friendly orientation. And then, the other part of B, small roman numeral three, that I wanted to change is to reinstate the last sentence of the existing text. So, to add back in the sentence that vehicle parking and driveways shall be at least forty feet from the lot corner. And it seemed to me that if you're trying to make a pedestrian-friendly exterior of the building having traffic going by, you already have traffic going by on two sides. And if you have driveways only forty feet in from the corner, then you have kind of a little island effect, traffic streaming by on three or four sides.
Okay, and I see Mr. Davis in the queue.
Yes, there, line thirty-three on page five. Staff would in general agree with the proposed amendment. We proposed that the wording be basically something to the effect of pedestrian-oriented facade or pedestrian-oriented building. Pedestrian-oriented is a term that we are defining in chapter fourteen, and it'd be useful here to provide that exact language here. On the second part, we've looked at the, one of our intent here with a lot of the gray language is to remove as much language that we feel is basically either not substantive or because of the situation, probably not needed as possible. So, in this case, because the corner building menu item on lines thirty-three, thirty-five must first achieve items I and II above it on both street facing building elevations on a corner, we believe that it would be very unlikely to have parking facilities and driveways within forty feet of the lot corner. It's rarely, if ever, going to happen. There just won't be enough space to put a building with the windows and the entrances. And then, within forty feet, also a parking area. Forty feet is not a far distance as I used to think it was when I started this project.
Okay. Just a minute. So, Ms. Pease, what do you want to do?
I guess that makes sense, if it makes sense to everybody else, that you're not going to put a driveway that close and meet the other requirements.
Okay, so, you want to?
Just to change to line thirty-three, thirty-four.
You want to?
Keep that change.
Keep those changes, but not the others?
Yes, that's, oh, that makes sense.
Mr. Weddleton?
Did you, just for staff, did you look at this in terms of buildings that have drive-throughs? Because they, they're going to have parking and driveways on three sides, and it'll be, I mean, would they, would Taco Bell and all these different places be able to do this?
I think so. And there are cities that actually don't, that basically will require them always to have the building to the corner or to the street, have the driving aisle for the drive-through behind. And our most recent local example is the Huffman Walgreens. They have three streets. And they're building, it's on the corner. The drive-through's around behind it. They were able to pull it off in that site. And we've, we even had the opportunity to go on a tour of a city in Lower Forty-Eight that has an ordinance about this kind of thing. And toured about sixteen different drive-through vehicle-oriented sites that are achieving standards even more rigorous than what we're achieving. And so, we believe that it's doable.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Isham?
Just to comment on that forty feet from the lot corners, if it's not very probable that it's going to happen, then does it really, do we gain anything by taking it out? I guess if it, I mean, I see no problem with leaving it in there, quite honestly, if it's not going to happen. And then, if somebody tries it, then something's there to prevent it from happening.
Ms. Pease?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I guess I would flip-flop on this. And so, let's keep it in, partly because I suppose you could have a parking garage entrance forty feet from the corner. So, I think the idea is to not surround that corner with traffic other than already on the two streets. So, I'd say, let's move it in. I mean, yeah, let's reinstate that last sentence on lines forty to forty-two.
Okay, we know what Ms. Pease wants to do. Is everybody clear? We know staff has recommended not including that, but she would like included. Is there any objection to approving it with that included? I don't hear any objections, so it will go forward with that last sentence included. Adding back in, "Vehicle parking and driveways shall be at least forty feet from the lot corner." Okay. Now.
My comment on there is also moot because of clarification on that large retail.
Okay, so, now, let's move to see Mr. Weddleton. Your items?
I'm done with five, page five.
You're okay?
Right.
You're okay. Now, all right. So, now, we move on. We have little, and Ms. Pease, you have on your, still, the street-oriented entrances. You have changes for?
Yes.
Lines forty-three, forty, up through fifty.
Yes. And I had written in my comments, the question to staff, "How are the proximity requirements for the main entrances calculated?" And it seemed to me that sixty feet back from the sidewalk, you could put a twenty-four-foot wide drive aisle and a row of parking and still have a really wide patio, plaza, and some landscaping. And if the intent is to have lively interaction between the building facade and the street, it seems that's quite a separation from the street with all those potential features. So, my, that's a question. Is there some basis for your, strong basis for your sixty-foot or ninety-foot allowance? And if not, I would like to shorten it to something that provides a better street or sidewalk and facade interplay.
Yes, the standard was developed with an idea that the building itself could be up to the maximum setback, which could be twenty feet or up to forty feet, actually, the maximum setback from the street lot line. This just reads to the sidewalk. The sidewalk may actually be in the right-of-way. It itself may be five feet away even from the residential property. So, the distances here, for example, the proposal forty feet, that puts the street-oriented entrance within thirty-five feet, basically, of the front property line in some cases. The idea would be that in some cases, you may have a building where the entrance, it's still directly connected to the street. Perhaps it's set back a little bit. Perhaps it's set back on a facade with a walkway that comes up to the main front facade of the building and continues along perhaps the side wall of the building. Just provides a little more flexibility. The, once we get, once we get so close, we're not providing very much flexibility for, the entrance still works, but that may be a little further away. We've looked at examples of buildings that they seem quite close to the sidewalk, and in fact, they're thirty, thirty-five feet away. It's really surprising how much. It's really surprising how much space there is. We also don't want to encourage buildings to squeeze up too close to the street necessarily. We want to give the street a little bit of breathing room. Unfortunately, in Anchorage, our rights-of-way, when the city was first platted, were basically inadequate for a northern design city where you're providing a lot of open-air views, sunlight access. So, throughout the process, we've gradually relaxed our proposed maximum setback requirements to allow more space. And so, that's basically the reasoning behind that first, that sixty feet, that provided that wiggle room for them. Now, the ninety feet is something else entirely. The ninety feet was to accommodate a full parking bay, meaning, you know, it's a twenty-four-foot wide parking aisle with a twenty-foot parking stall on one side and a twenty-foot parking stall on the other. So, it's accommodating one full parking bay between the walkway and the building. And the reasoning behind that was that for some of the larger buildings, that just provided more space and opportunity. The sixty feet and the ninety feet were basically two separate processes leading to those, and flexibility was the goal.
Go ahead.
To respond, I would say that the... If ninety feet allows a twenty-four-drive-foot wide drive aisle and two full rows of parking, you don't really... You're not really connecting the building and the building patio very well with the street if there's all that traffic between. So, they're allowed to do that, but I question giving credit for that as a street-oriented design feature. So, I would, I guess, still like to reduce these or at least eliminate the ninety feet and make it sixty for any credit. Again, it's not mandated, this is a choice, but to make it street-oriented, all that traffic and parking in between doesn't really accomplish that, I don't think.
Okay, so your proposal is... Is to provide at least one primary entrance within forty feet of a street sidewalk?
Yes, or, let's see, I think I've said sixty-five feet.
Or sixty-five feet for buildings over twenty-five thousand square feet?
Yes.
Okay.
And a question for staff to clarify. So, Mr. Davis, was your point that the sidewalk may actually be... There might be right-of-way existing... The right-of-way line might be between the building and the sidewalk, so that if they measure from the sidewalk, they could widen the road at some point and have the building too close?
I guess in a lot of cases, the sidewalk is back a curb within the right-of-way. It's right next to the travel lane and then between that and the private property line frontage, there is landscaping, and this has often been standard practice in both DOT and municipal roads. In other cases, even where the sidewalk is a bit separated, several feet, there often seems to be several feet of landscaping. And staff doesn't have strong objections at this time to the proposed amendment. If there are concerns about using the sidewalk as the line, you could change that to the property line and be sure that the building will be within a certain distance of the property line and not have to worry about different roadway designs.
But that makes sense to me, because can you... Because here they're required to see that there's a sidewalk connected to the sidewalk and it may go through public right-of-way that they're not allowed to build on, is that correct?
In some cases, it's possible. For example, on C Street, it probably wouldn't be very productive for the property owner to choose this menu choice, this street-oriented entrance along C if they aren't even allowed access to C. But in most cases, I would hope they would be.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Do you... Does anyone have objection to accepting Ms. Pease's amendments? In hearing none, that those amendments will be accepted. All right, let me collect myself now. I'm moving back and forth here. Mr. Weddleton, did you have some... No, you don't have any until wall modulation. And I'll let you go next since you have that something in that section.
Okay, I think Commissioner Pease as well, and my issues with this, and this is page six, line thirty-six to forty-two, is the twelve-foot modulation. It seems like quite a bit, and that looks like it might not work for some buildings. It would be very expensive, and I think we were talking about residential, that moving a foundation is fairly expensive, too. And I don't know that twelve feet would be necessary to really make a feel... A wall feel better, so I'm guessing there's a modification here.
And Ms. Pease has proposed modification as well. While she's...
Do you want me to speak to it?
Well, just a second, but while that's being passed out by Ms. McConnell, I just want to confirm that no one had any objections to any of the other yellow areas on page five? I didn't think so. All right, now we're officially on page six. Okay. All right, you may go ahead, Ms. Pease.
Ma'am, sure, I'm just reading the change, and I think the change answers my concern, which was the interval at which the wall modulation would be required. So, I drop my change and go with the staff's change at this point.
Okay. And exactly where does this fit in, Ms. McConnell?
This adds on page six, lines thirty-six through forty-two, that's where it's II, that's the same II that's at the bottom of the second part of this page, and the new yellow at the top of this new page would just be a new choice within the building massing choices.
Okay. Does it substitute the building massing choices of the little I where it says upper story?
Actually, no. I actually numbered carefully. Probably one of the one on the new sheet that just says wall modulation would be II, wall modulation or wall building massing would be III, and then everything else would get renumbered.
Oh, okay. Do I have other comments?
Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, so it would be the two little I's and then with another little I under it?
Roof forms becomes IV.
On page six, under building massing choices, little I on line thirty-one, upper story would remain the same.
Right.
II would be the new yellow language on the separate sheet called wall modulation, which has A, B, and C under it.
And where would that get inserted, at what line?
It would be between lines thirty-five and thirty-six.
Okay. All right, and then where would the little two I's get put? That would substitute for the two that's in here under wall modulation?
No, it would be a new II and everything after it would get pushed up a number. So, what is the now two I would become three I, what is now three I would become four I?
Okay.
Ma'am, sure, I'm confused, because my page says five B I. And I'm not sure what we're saying, one I and two I, and I don't see that.
Okay.
Five B... Single I, double I, triple I. Let's... I mean by one I and two I.
Oh, first Roman, then else. One, two, three. The little Roman mats.
Okay, all right. I'm thinking Arabic, two I. Okay, so...
Roman mats.
Ma'am, sure, if wall... If we now have wall modulation replaced with this new section that says wall modulation dash overall building massing, I guess...
No, it's not replaced.
So, it's new.
It's not replaced, is it, Ms. McConnell? I thought she said...
No, it's not. It is simply inserting it a new option, another menu item. And it is basically making this building massing menu do the same thing that the multifamily massing menu did in the residential section. In that section, we also provided two wall modulation choices, one with minor, more frequent modulations, which is what we're proposing to add here, and basically, it's the same language with several of the numbers different as the multifamily wall modulation item. And then, secondly, the multifamily wall modulation menu had an item very similar to what appears on Roman mat II, double I on lines thirty-six to forty-two, page six. And what we're attempting to do here is, just as for the multifamily, provide two choices in how to modulate the building, the first being more frequent modulations that are basically a minimum of eight feet wide and four feet deep or even a minimum of just two feet deep depending on certain factors. That's the first choice, and that's similar to multifamily. And then, the second choice being a more profound modulation in the overall building mass, and we've looked at several office buildings. One example would be, if you're familiar with it, the Bristol, I think it's the Bristol Bay Corporation, the native corporation there on A Street on Sixteenth. The south facade of their four-story office building has a major modulation in it, just one, but it's about twelve to sixteen feet deep, and that building basically just meets the criteria of the size and scale of this modulation. It's so big, it really needs to happen only once unless the building is extremely long. So, there are two choices, and the two choices with the multifamily, you have Park Plaza, Park Plaza's south facade, it wouldn't have actually met the first item, that more frequent wall modulation, it would have failed that. It achieved its modulation credit by the second, the second choice, the more major modulations in the overall... You have two building rings and then a main tower and all of that in that building. This is sort of the same approach. And the approach is in response to basically both comments we received, one being, well, twelve sure seems like a hefty modulation to require, you can't cantilever that, foundation's expensive. The second being, well, we need more frequent modulations, and this was our... This is our proposed response.
Okay, what I want to do now is not focus on any language in these changes at all. I want to get the numbering, because... Can I do that?
Yeah, we should do it.
Okay.
Can I talk to that?
Yes, you can.
Okay, just as I understand what you're telling us, five B I is as written in the draft, stays the same, okay? Then this thing you handed out, wall modulation becomes double I.
Correct.
Wall modulation over all building massing becomes triple I.
Correct.
And then roof forms becomes IV.
Correct.
Okay, and then height transition becomes V.
Correct.
Upper story step back becomes VI. Plaza courtyard becomes VII, and housing becomes VIII.
That's correct.
Okay.
But now, what I'm still not clear on is we have two wall modulations, the one on page... That exists on page six that currently has two little I's, and the one on the handout you gave us that has the one little I and the big A, B, C.
Perhaps this would be a better way to think of it. If you delete... On page six, if you delete lines thirty-six through forty-two...
Yeah.
And you replace it with all the language that is in the handout, but with correct numbering.
Oh, now that I can understand and do perfectly well, but at some point, my ears heard they were both staying in, and that was what I didn't understand. Now I'm clear. Ms. Pease?
Yes, I'm wondering if anyone else on the commission has any concern that the current language for the wall modulation, overall building massing, still allows a one-hundred-and-forty-foot wall with no modulation? And it seems that wouldn't occur often, but you could have buildings like the one-story veteran domicile there on C Street, where you could have a one-hundred-and-forty-foot wall. This is not supposed to be a big box, it's just supposed to be smaller buildings, so meh. Does anyone else have a concern that one-forty is still too long?
You're proposing half that, right?
Well, maybe half's a little bit too limited now that there's another option, but I'm just, you know, thinking that if that were across the street from my residence, a one-forty-foot long wall would look like a box store.
Well, but it probably wouldn't be across from your residence, because it's going to residential built, you know? You live in a residential area.
Yeah, I guess, but we do have lots of places where residential, but it's commercial.
And in fact, these kick in where that happens, that's where these...
Well, seventy's too small, but a hundred, I don't know. Obviously, we need unanimity to pass anything, so if someone else wants to try another number, fine, otherwise, it will stand.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the Walmart that we looked at last week, that their long wall on the south side was... It must have been over five hundred feet, because I ticked it off kind of looking at this. So, you would... You could have, say, in the middle, a twelve-foot by, who knows, twenty... You know, twelve foot deep, maybe they go twenty foot, you know, modulation in the middle, and then still have on either side a hundred-and-forty feet, it would be just a blank wall, so that, you know, that is... And you'd hardly notice it on a five-hundred-something foot-long building. So, I think that's a good point. I would be open to some change here.
I'm thinking of some of the... They're not necessarily big boxes, but they're not necessarily small either, like some of the office supply stores. You know, we have the one on Tudor, we have one downtown, and I don't know how long those are, but they're a little offensive to look at, and they tried to put some relief into some elevations of them, but they really... Even in an all-commercial district, they really do stick out like a sore thumb. What could we do that where it wouldn't be too onerous, but would provide some variability?
In response, I believe that the office supply store downtown occupies a block, and so it would be... The building is a block long along Fifth Avenue, it would be three hundred feet long. This standard would basically require a modulation in that building that's at least twelve feet deep, that would be at least forty feet long, basically the... About the width of a down... Sorry? Three hundred feet. So, sixty, so it'd be the width of a full downtown block, this modulation, and it would... So it'd be the width of a full downtown block, this modulation, and it would basically break up that building mass.
Okay, Mr. Weddleton?
Well, just doing some quick math here now, you know, and I looked at the Walmart, but that would be well over twenty-five thousand square feet, so the additional rules would kick in. So maybe that would solve this, because if you had a building under twenty-five thousand square feet, which we're talking about here, and if it had a side that was two hundred and eighty feet long, okay, well, then it could only be ninety feet wide. So you'd have this fairly long, that would be an unusual shape, I would think. So it'd be unusual to have a huge, long stretch in buildings under twenty-five thousand feet. And that's, that's what we're talking about in this section.
Okay, I didn't try to sketch it out, so if you're, if you've done that and you don't have a concern that we're going to run up against this dimension, I guess I'll, it sounds like it would be an awkward dimension.
You'd have a, it'd be, I mean, it seems strange to me. I don't, staff might have more to.
They're just examples, like the office building downtown, and then some of those hotel buildings along thirty-six that are just a wall that keeps going and growing.
But those are over twenty-five thousand square feet.
Yeah, those are good.
They have the additional standards.
Mr. Eishem?
No, I'm sorry, I already spoke.
You spoke. And Ms. Pease, anything else?
Madam Chair, I'd just make a comment.
As a quick, we want to try to get that.
Retailers would not fall under the large, kind of large, commercial development because they wouldn't be considered a retail use. And I have to fill gas on the fire, but the other thing is, no matter what we make the dimension here, it's a choice, and someone could build a long building wall without choosing to modulate it by with one of these choices. So even by changing the number, we don't necessarily solve that problem. One of the thinking that did go into this particular dimension was thinking of downtown mats, many of which are fifty or sixty feet wide and a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty feet long, and thinking that requiring a large modulation along the side wall of one of those buildings really took out a lot of usable space in that lot. And so we were, you know, part of the thinking that went into this was trying to accommodate that particular lot dimension.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any objection to keeping it the way it is? Apparently not, so we will move on. Now I need to figure out where I have left off. Let's see. Six, seven. Okay. Page seven, moving along, whoops.
I apologize, Madam Chair. Were we not going to replace the existing language on lines thirty-six through forty-two of page six with the.
We did.
Oh, we did?
We've replaced it.
Okay.
Done. Okay, so, and, and everything else is, that was in yellow, we've accepted on six. So now we're on page seven, and let me look here. Page, looks like Ms. Pease didn't have anything for page seven, and neither did Mr. Weddleton. Is there any problem with what's on page seven, my friends? Hearing none, page seven is okay. Happy day. Page eight, Ms. Pease?
Yes, Madam Chair, just one quick, I am looking at page eight on line thirty-two. I didn't feel that pedestrian, I would like to delete the credit for pedestrian-scale building signs and or building lighting. My thinking is that property owners will style signs regardless. If retiring pedestrians, they're going to make them pedestrian-sized, and I don't know that there's any definition of what pedestrian size is. And in terms of pedestrian-scale building lighting, that's a little vague to me, too. The walkways would be eliminated anywhere, I'm presuming, so I just didn't see giving credit for this, didn't feel it enhanced the streetscape for pedestrians.
Okay. Is there any objection to eliminating that?
Could you, what would be the exact change there?
I would just delete on page eight, line thirty-two, that item D. There's another menu here of how you can get credit for enriching the pedestrian experience at the ground level. And I thought, I won't go back over my business. I didn't think that you should get credit for those items in D.
The sign, excuse me, the sign or, and the lighting, delete that whole D.
Yes.
Is that right?
There should be things that are required.
I mean, I'd, I'd probably agree with the sign, because it'll go up either way, but the lighting, if you look at that bicycle shop store, maybe if they'd put some little lights along the diamond side or something like that, that would give some small modulation on that side, and they would also light the sidewalk there.
Well, I think the sidewalk's going to be lighted anywhere, and I know it's a little bit.
Well, those tall streetlights, thirty-something feet up there, but not the homey little lights like on Spindard, or, you know.
Well, this isn't lighting the sidewalk, this is lighting the building. I guess, it's partly subjective, you know, bat-wang lights. They're, you know, there are actually some attractive lights on the Sears Mall and the North Facade that create some sculpture look to it. So if you feel that you want to leave in pedestrian-scale building lighting, and if staff thinks, you know, when they see it, that's okay with me, I guess.
Not would it hurt to leave it in?
But the signs, I don't, I don't really.
I agree with that.
If it signs up, they'll be eye-level if they need them.
Now, I think it's to their benefit to have signs, say, that, I think the building lighting might provide a measure of safety.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we propose to modify line thirty-two to read pedestrian-scale building lighting.
Does anybody have a problem with that? Apparently not, so we've just removed building signs. Mr. Weddleton?
Okay, so I have, moving up that page slightly, a question for staff. And did I misread this? I guess you'd have, the base portion, two feet above the ground, would have clear-story level windows. And my understanding on clear-story windows is they're way up high. Is that my reading, or?
No, we made a bit of a muddle of this one, and I have a proposed change. Starting on line, line fifteen, I think fifteen, yeah. Sorry, I said fourteen. The base portion rises to at least two feet above grade and is distinguished from the rest of the building by such elements as a change in plane, color, texture, and/or material. Basically taking out cornice and arcade, clear-story level windows, and other differences, and adding change instead of that language. And then I would ask that the proposed, starting at the end of line seventeen, the top may consist of cornice treatments, et cetera, et cetera.
Did everybody, did everybody get that?
Could you read that, how it reads again, please?
Sure. The base portion rises to at least two feet above grade and is distinguished from the rest of the building by such elements as a change in plane, color, texture, and/or material. The top may consist of cornice treatments, et cetera.
So plain stays in?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, that works for me, thank you.
Does that work for everybody? Okay, did you get that, Madam Secretary? Okay. Any objections? Mr. Weddleton? Do you have objections?
No, I think it's very good, thank you.
Okay, no objections, all right. Mr. Weddleton, you're in the queue for some reason.
Oh, no, I'm, that was.
You're done. Ms. Pease, you're in the queue for some reason.
Well, my last concern on page eight is on line number thirty-four, where credit would be given for tile work, and it seemed to me that that's not quantified or quantified in any way. Did staff want to add to that, or just, again, figure you'll know it when you see it? I think we'd be happy to do some more descriptive language there, but we don't have anything right now. Could we be directed by the body to.
Enhance that?
Enhance that, yes. Yes, I would so direct.
Does the body have any suggestions, I think, is what they might have been soliciting?
Yeah, I would suggest that tile work can be on the floors or on the walls, or it can be in a lot of places.
Well, I'm assuming it would be exterior.
Yeah.
So that it's visible. Yes, closer to the ground rather than higher. Could be in a walkway.
Thank you. You'll allow us, we would just modify the.
You know, in fact, if it's in a walkway, we're only going to see it a few months out of the year, but that's life, this is Alaska.
And, Madam Chair, so also some quantification of it, whether it needs to be along thirty percent of the building facade, or, you know, certain stretches of the walkway.
And be practical. Okay, anything else on page eight? Any objection to any of the other yellow words? Hearing none, page eight is fixed. Moving on to page nine. And let's see if page nine looks like it's a happy page. All right, Ms. Pease?
Um, yes, Madam Chair. Something I have in my notes, but on page nine, lines eleven through fifteen, the four-sided design, I guess I would just ask staff to ensure that four-sided design that doesn't meet code, or doesn't qualify for good architecture shouldn't get a credit for being bad all the way around, or plain all the way around.
Okay.
And, so, that's one.
And then you had a number of things written in your write-up.
Um, yes. Also on page nine, line twenty-three, that directs that the purpose of this northern climate design is to consider microclimatic impacts on the site and surrounding community. I suggest it should say, provide beneficial microclimatic impacts. And the rest of the sentence is the same.
Okay. Any objection to those proposed changes? Okay, I don't hear any. Anything else on page nine, Ms. Pease?
Yes, when, with regard to lines thirty-eight, line thirty-eight and thirty-nine, forty, the sheltered facade walkway, I wonder whether staff would advise that the shelter needs to be the entire width of the walkway. And the reason I ask that is, at the athletic club I go to, they put on a shelter that drips water right into the middle of the walkway because it projects out only halfway, so the walkway's actually hazardous.
Or especially in the winter when it's, or in this breakup, when it starts melting.
Right. So that would be on line thirty-nine, I would modify it so that it says, starts off the same language, provide pedestrian shelter or a pedestrian arcade over, and then I would insert the entire width of a walkway and along a minimum, and then continue.
The entire width of the walkway.
And then the passage can continue, and along a minimum, and then I would continue with existing text.
Okay.
What if I could, actually, I'm in there on, as we move forward on page twelve, they have some wording for the large establishments, and I think this parallels things we've done for residential. It says, "Buildings and roofs shall be designed so that drainage from the roof shall not fall on sidewalks, walkways, or building entrances." So if that same wording would work, I'd say, let's use that.
That's better, so instead of my language, insert that sentence.
And what page is that coming from, John?
That's lines twenty-seven and twenty-eight on page twelve.
Is there any objection to that change, colleagues? Okay, hearing none, that change will be made. Anything else, Ms. Pease, or anyone else?
I had a comment on page nine that is moot because I'm, so ignore that.
Okay.
Just if you go down it.
Any objection to any of the other yellow areas? Hearing none, page nine has been dispensed with. Moving on to page ten. Okay. Ms. Pease?
Yes, Madam Chair, down to bottom of page ten, starting on line twenty-nine, there's a credit given for transparent sheltering roof. And my concern here is that if you have a very small transparent, a very small sheltering roof, or a very high one, you get some, quite a bit of daylight penetrating under it anyway. So I may not have the exact wording right, but if the commission agrees with the concept, maybe staff could tinker with it. But the idea is that this would apply only if the roof covers more than certain mile-square footage, or has a clearance height that's fairly low. I'm not putting in numbers, but I might not have them tinkered or calibrated right.
And those are on?
They're on my handout. I said, if the roof covers more than sixty-four feet, has no dimension shorter than ten feet, or clearance height less than twelve feet. I just didn't want a little tiny roof over a taxi stand to get double credit for being clear.
Okay, Mr. Eishem?
I just, you know, sometimes you can get these things that are called sun tubes or something like that, and they're just little things about this big, but they're designed in such a way that they, they reflect the light, and they put out a lot of light once they get through to where they're going. So, you know, maybe sixty square feet is, is, if you applied that and you had a sun tube, you'd be getting a lot of light out of a little tube that, that, you know, does more than the actual size of the device itself. And maybe, I don't want to get too technical, but maybe you want to say, you know, how much it lets through, or something like that, I don't know. Maybe Jim can address that better than I can, but, you know, the sun tubes primarily are in houses, but, you know, maybe you could use them in other applications.
Okay, what are we going to do, kids?
You know, I accept, I think it's fairly minor, because even a taxi stand. You know, I accept, I, I think it's fairly minor, because even a taxi stand would be six feet by ten feet.
Yeah.
So, your dimensions certainly aren't, uh-
No, not always.
I don't think they'd have a big, um, impact, actually.
Yeah, okay. Any problem with that proposed change?
I support them, but-
I don't hear any objections, so that change has been made. Anything else on page ten? Any problems with the other yellow? None, then page ten is approved. Moving on to page eleven. We will go up to the large commercial establishments, and, um, anything for those up through the little seven, Roman et seven? On line nineteen.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this is, I guess, a question to staff. Uh, the first line says, "Provide a publicly accessible atrium." And is that adequately defined in code, "Publicly accessible"? So that it's got some benefit beyond just the cubicles that are clustered around it?
It isn't, and we'll, uh, in response to your comment, we will, uh, attempt to define it for chapter fourteen, to define "publicly accessible," so that where it's used in the code, it can be defined.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything, uh, Mr. Weddleton?
Oh, I have nothing on that. I, I just wanted to make sure we didn't forget to let staff talk about the pictures.
Oh, don't worry, we're going to talk about those, but not before, Ms. Pease, something else on, up through the little Roman et seven?
Yes, uh, mine, yes, it's mine. Protective wall projections, um, this section says, they should protect public spaces and building entrances. And, um, how do we, how will staff judge whether it protects and against what, um, you know, a wall on that protects against the wind if it's in a windy location? So... And actually, these are balconies and marquises. So these are providing some sort of vertical protection. It's just not clear to me. It says protective wall projections, but it's not pony walls or windscreen walls, it's balconies and marquises. It's just not clear to me how they're protecting the public. Um, and I don't have substitute language, but I wonder whether staff could clarify what's being protected and who, from what.
It appears you're talking about some sort of roof-like protection, if they're balconies and things of that nature, protecting from rain or snow or something.
Okay, Mr. Davis?
Yes, the, the intent of this is, uh, wind protection, mostly from wind downdrafts. Uh, research, uh, among the techniques used on multi-story buildings, uh, that are above a sidewalk or pedestrian area. The multiple balconies, perhaps, let's say it's a four-story building, in certain parts of the building, each story having balconies, uh, over each, uh, extending out from each unit. Um, it does have an impact on wind downdrafts, and it's, it's, uh, it's a technique that could be very helpful in, in multi-story buildings, that wind downdrafts are one of the wind effects that we, uh, have identified and are trying to avoid. Now, the language isn't clear. Protective wall projections is somewhat dated language, admittedly, and since that time, we're using the term "wall projections" in a very different way, um, earlier in these sections, and so, uh, that term may be confusing. Uh, it could be protective balconies, uh, or, or similar, uh, sheltering features, or something to that effect, but the term "wall projections" is confusing. There could also be some more language added here about the intent, um, that may be missing.
Thank you. Ms. Pease?
Yes, I would, I would, um, ask for a change in the subtitle, and also, when you explain the intent, could you specify whether this will be for buildings over a certain height that are likely to cause downdrafts? That'd be helpful. That'd be my proposal.
Is everyone on board with that? Unless I hear objection, I will assume yes. Does staff understand that request?
Does, Commissioner Pease, do you want us to only make it applicable to buildings over a certain height?
Well, if that's where the benefit accrues, I mean, if there's a three-story building that doesn't create a downdraft, and what you're trying to do with this credit is protect against downdrafts, then don't give, won't put that shit credit. Thank you. Okay. Any objection to the other yellow parts, uh, up through line nineteen on page eleven? Okay, hearing none. We're going to take a break for just five minutes, five short minutes, just get all refocused and sharpened, and get some caffeine if we need it. We will get done, we're going to get done with this by ten o'clock, because we're going to keep our comments on point. You're doing great. And everybody's doing great.
I have to drive this through in the morning, and after all of this-
Round you up. Okay, we're back in our committee of the whole, and we're moving forward. Uh, we've had a couple of more pictures to, uh, for presentation in our purple packet, and if they, you could make it kind of brief, because we are committed to get done before ten o'clock.
Sure. Um, before you look at the purple packet, I wanted to draw your attention to the chart that shows you the comparison of the proposed, uh, code and the current code for large commercial. On the right side of the chart, under the current code, every, it's not in the order that it is under the current code today, but every single standard that exists in the current code for the Big Box standards is in this chart. Um, and so, I, I've tried to, to show you how each one is addressed under the proposed code, and you'll see language like, um, you know, "Add aesthetically pleasing character," and, um, "Provide architectural features that contribute to visual interest," and "Reduce scale," you know, some, some urban language, but nothing specific. So, what you'll see on the left side is ways that we tried to take the general concepts that are addressed under the current code and make them more measurable, so that there's less argument, both, um, at the staff level in the pre-apps and in front of the commission, in terms of, is this standard met or not? With that introduction, turning to the pictures, um, you will find that neither of the two developments that we tested, um, did meet our proposed standards, and I would say that is because of the, um, difficulty in interpreting, uh, some of the existing standards. Um, some of the main ones that stick out are, um, community spaces. None of the Big Box buildings that I know that have been, um, approved under the new, under the existing Big Box ordinance have, uh, a community space that would meet our standards. Um, also, there's a distinct lack of, you know, ground level expression, as we would call it, on, um, side facades that face streets, um, that face parking areas, and so, uh, that would be another reason that both of these buildings, uh, follow our new standards. Um, I would also say we, we have pushed them up another little notch, that, you know, we took what exists today, we tried to make it measurable, and then we added an optional menu at the end and said, "Okay, you, you have to do a little bit more." You know, we've had these standards for eight years, now we're going to push it up there just a little bit more to require a little bit more from these large establishments. And I, I would also have to say that in general, the large, um, nationally, national companies, they're used to meeting standards like this. These kinds of standards exist in many, many, many communities around the country, and I remember one coming in to meet with us that said, uh, you know, "How long will it take to go through this process?" And we said, "Oh, you know, six months, probably," and they said, "Wow, we're doing this in L.R., and it's taken two years, and we're not finished." So, I, I think what we are proposing, um, is not unrealistic and is, um, actually quite speedy and reasonable compared to other parts of the country. Would you like any more detail? I was going to end there.
I think we'll have some questions, Mr. Connell. Mr. Weddleton?
Well, it's interesting, but be here with great disdain sometimes, is you're too prescriptive. So you're going from loose language to what would be prescriptive, right? And, and that's because you have some real prop, I mean, is it, because there is a real difficulty in interpreting this vague language, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Pease?
I just have one quick question. I'll, I'll finish sort of going through the chart as we proceed, but, um, on the parking, um, the new code drops the prohibition, which I wasn't even aware existed, of nonline storage or overnight camping in trailers or recreational vehicles. Is that dealt with somewhere else, or is that, okay? Is that something that's an accepted, accepted and acceptable practice? You know, the, the storage issues dealt with elsewhere. I don't actually recall whether we've dealt with the camping, um, in other places. I kind of think we haven't. Okay, just wanted to flag that, that is a difference. I don't know that I have opinion on it, but-
Okay, well, we are now on page eleven at, uh, twenty-one oh seven, one three oh, "Large establishments." And we have our new chart, and then I have changes, uh, offered up by Ms. Pease once again.
Um, yes, I have, um, let's see, where is it? Page eleven. A concern on, um, lines forty through, or, excuse me, thirty-nine and forty. It says that the applicability doesn't include any secondary buildings or padlots if they're less than, if I read it, if they're less than twenty-five thousand gross square feet of floor area. And my concern is, what happens if you have a campus-style large retail establishment, so that you have your grocery section that's twenty-five thousand square feet next to your general merchandise, you know, connected by a little walkway? Or, I think, the new mall over on, on, uh, Glory and Muldoon, whose name I haven't learned to pronounce yet. It has sort of something of a campus style, so I wouldn't, I think we want to exempt the smaller buildings in a campus-style development.
Ms. Pease, you raise a good point. Also, if you look on page fifteen, there's a section on master site plan and secondary buildings. So, well, I think it may be in the intent that the secondary buildings don't necessarily have to meet all of these standards. They have to be integrated into the development in a way that's described here, so I think we could, um, do some work on that applicability statement to clarify both the situation you're describing and, um, and make sure that it's known that the secondary buildings still are part of the picture in this master site plan section.
Well, then, would you have any objection to the change, uh, that Ms. Pease is proposing?
I, I would like, y- yes, because then I think it sounds like any secondary building has to do all of these other things, which may not necessarily be reasonable. It, it has to meet, you know, the, the weather protection and the community space, and the wall modulation, and the ground level expression, and and I would at least like your review to see whether those would be appropriate for a small secondary building.
Ms. Pease?
Um, I guess I would move it to staff. Again, if there's sort of a, um, if it's kind of all part of the same retail establishment, I would think that there should be some applicability. And, yeah, I think, I think, I did pick up on the contradiction there on page thirteen, lines thirty-four to thirty-eight, so it needs to be addressed at any rate. But in, in sort of passing this off to staff, I would ask them to avoid a loophole in which a site could be developed with a number of buildings that are just under the minimum.
So, you're withdrawing your proposed change?
Uh, yes, I'm asking, but I'm asking staff, uh, of course, with the consent of the commission, asking staff to, to, uh, put in a language that ensures there is no loophole here. That would allow quite large buildings to be built under the threshold without these standards.
Is the group comfortable with that?
Well, I, I, you can, you can, a little bit on that, because I, I'd made some notes on, um, this as well, and you know, to some extent, when they have these pads on the perimeter of these, um, areas, and you look at something like gallows, you know, that actually is fairly street-oriented. It looks nice there, breaks monotony of the huge sea of parking. And you wouldn't want to impose on that L4 landscaping, two thousand square foot, or two hundred square foot pedestrian protection at the entrance, and community space, so, and that would take up all of their lot, and you'd lose something that's pretty good, so it, I mean, you don't, you want to certainly consider what they're doing, but if you applied the rules strictly to the buildings on those pads, which tend to be smaller, then, um, we'd have a problem. I mean, we'd work against our goals.
Okay, Mr. Eishem?
Madam Chair, perhaps, um, they could, uh, staff could develop a, uh, a special section for those secondary buildings that are part of a larger development, uh, that would either, you know, include or exclude certain things that would be applicable to these smaller buildings that are under twenty-five thousand square feet. But I, you know, for instance, the Muldoon Mall, it seems to me they have a fairly tight control on what's going on there, because they do want a, a high-class very, you know, good appearing mall, but, uh, you know, that may not be the case in other developers, so, uh, I, I do believe we've got to, we need to address that some way, and I, and I agree that things that apply to over twenty-five thousand square foot buildings may not necessarily apply to the smaller buildings that are the outlying buildings.
Well, many times when you have a central lot, and then you have a, a number of frag lots around the perimeter, there's some type of a general development plan for that area, or there is some sort of a, an agreement that's recorded, uh, against the subdivision that might also have certain level of development standards that, um, the lot owners have to adhere to, that would be in addition to what the municipality, uh, you know, might require. That might not be in every instance, but I think a lot of the newer subdivisions have requirements like that, because they don't want to have, um, development, uh, that isn't, isn't complementary to the, uh, adjacent lots, um, occurring. But, uh, does staff understand what, uh, Ms. Pease's intentions are?
I believe so.
Okay. Is there any objection from anyone? Okay. Is anyone unhappy with the, uh, rest of the yellow language on page eleven?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just going back to Ms. Pease's proposal, uh, perhaps the way to deal with it would be to, uh, on line thirty-nine, put a period after a floor area and take out the words "but not including," and then say, "Secondary buildings or padbots as part of the same development site that are less than twenty-five thousand gross square feet of floor area are subject to, you know, maybe a list of parrot baff, or list something, uh, that they can refer to." And that would be very, and let staff dream up this list- And that would be very, and let staff dream up this list or, you know, go through a list and exclude certain things or some way to say this is what they're subject to.
I think that's an idea that staff could work with.
But mention it very specifically in this paragraph, this applicability paragraph, and refer them to something that if you've got these secondary buildings, here's where you go to find out what they're subject to.
Staff seems to be nodding to that idea, and I would agree with referencing it here.
Mr. Weddleton, you're back in the queue.
Do we move on from that issue? I had a small edit, so different location.
Okay, just a second. Any objection to that? Do you have some more edits to page 11?
I have a small one.
Okay.
Where it starts on page 22. If you break it down, it says, "Large commercial establishments have a large physical scale." So I would delete a large physical scale because it's just redundant. Minor thing, but...
And what line are you on?
That would be the last two words of line 22 and the first two of line 23.
A large physical scale that you're suggesting to delete?
Yeah, because that's kind of a truism. A large commercial establishment would have a large physical scale.
Okay. Any objection? Okay, no objection. Anything else? And everybody agreed with the yellow language? Okay. Moving on to page 12. All right, page 12. Ms. Pease has under parking.
Yes, just one small proposed deletion in lines 22 and 23. I'd like to delete the words wherever practicable. This is an intent statement, not prescriptive. And I just think it should be stronger, it would be stronger without those words. You can always do something to improve the appearance of large expanses of parking. So something's going to be practicable.
Okay. Mr. Weddleton.
I have two points on this. One, that's in what I handed out, and then some comments on the comparison that staff gave us. And I guess this is a question to staff in the first place is, just reading this, it doesn't look like it really adds anything. Parking, lands, I mean, it doesn't, basically, they're subject to the standards that in the section we've already dealt with, and that's...
Well, this is a discretionary approval. I mean, so it comes to a commission, and the commission gets to, you know, judge it by the standards, but they, but this is a statement that gives the commission discretionary kind of authority to say, "You have to meet the intent of this, and if you don't think you've met the intent, you have to change it." So while it doesn't actually give a numerical standard, it is language from the current code that suggests, well, kind of loosey-goosey, the staff felt was important to leave in to give the, you know, decision-making body the discretionary power to require the intent of this section.
Okay, that's good. Because then, looking at the first page of this comparison you handed out in the parking, I would recommend adding the last sentence in the current code that starts with additional landscaping and community spaces maybe be required where the applicant wishes, et cetera.
I agree.
Because I think that meets the goals you're saying. It just highlights that those are things we could look at.
There actually is a maximum, there's a maximum parking spaces provision in the parking section, and if you provide more parking than you're required, more than 110% of the parking that you're required, you have to add additional landscaping as well. So that's actually kind of covered elsewhere.
Okay. Is, how about the line, "Site shall not allow storage"? We're not sure if that's inherent.
I think the storage is covered. I don't think the overnight camping is covered.
Okay. So you feel this is adequately covered in other sections?
And the thing I thought say about overnight camping is that the fact that we're trying to have uses provide only the parking they need will become a disincentive for these uses to allow camping. I think one of the reasons that, you know, one of the stores that show a nameless does, you know, consistently provide or allow people to camp RVs in their lot is because they have so much extra parking that it's really not necessary. And since we're bringing the amount of parking down, more of that parking will actually be used for customers. So, I mean, we could add it, but...
No, I'm fine with it. I don't think it's good to be redundant. So if it's elsewhere, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay. What are we doing on page 12? Ms. Pease?
Well, I've made the proposal to delete the intent language, delete from the intent language.
Well, practicable on lines 22 and 23.
So that's one, I guess we could...
Okay. Is there any objection to that deletion? I don't hear any. Okay.
The other parking question I had in looking at the chart, so this is not in my notes, but looking at the chart provided by staff, it required previously to address the convenience and safety of patrons. And I wonder if this, they feel that this is covered in the parking section, which you've memorized more than I have. And the reason I ask it is because we're still in our recent big box site plans, seeing things such as landabouts and curious places and, oh, we had angled parking questions. And I'm particularly concerned about the convenience and safety of pedestrians once they get out of their car. So I would refer you to lines 10 through 13 on page 12.
Okay.
Thank you. So then I only have those two-word changes on 22 and 23.
One of the things that we haven't really addressed anywhere specifically, to the best of my knowledge, anywhere on Title 21, and it's particularly relevant with the, these large commercial establishments and institutional uses, are taxi stands. And the need for taxi stands at stores. Now, we know that the Walmart in Midtown has one, that they just set up for themselves because they were having a lot of problems with people getting in and out of cabs. Security wouldn't let the cabs stop in the through lanes in front of the store. And a lot of the patrons are elderly or maybe have small children, so they needed a place to get out of the way to load their passengers. And it's something we've not addressed. It came up recently in an AMATs public hearing. Were you there? Yeah, it was just a fluke. And it's just something we need to think about at some point in time because as our population ages, we're going to need to accommodate those types of uses more as well as like anchor rides, dropping people off in wheelchairs to shop and such. Mr. Isham?
And ma'am chair, I think that really the problem isn't so much in dropping passengers off, but it's for the taxis waiting in a line like at the airport for customers. There needs to be a place for that on certain establishments. There has to be a taxi stand.
There has to be a place, and it needs to be part of our process where we, for some, certain types of establishments actually require that there be taxi stands.
I mean, it's almost like it needs to be a pull-off, and it's marked specially like where a bus stop is or something like that.
Right.
And so that the guys don't run them off.
It's a really safety thing, too.
Yes, the, we're in contact with the member of the taxi industry that I think made comments at that recent meeting and had been in contact with her. In response to her concerns, this past year, we did insert into the parking section the power for the traffic engineer to require high-intensity uses like large retail establishments to provide a taxi stand within the passenger loading zone subsection of the parking section. It includes a provision regarding taxi stands, and it doesn't require a certain amount, a certain number of stands. It leaves it rather open-ended, but it does provide the traffic engineer that ability. The member of the taxi industry reviewed that content and is probably, is likely to raise the issue again at the assembly level, and it's likely we'll be asked to work on it further. And so the concern about providing taxi stands and possibly kearing for taxis, it's likely to come up again in the parking section at the upcoming assembly deliberations.
Okay, thank you. Anything further on page 12? Okay. Any objection to the change on lines 22 and 23, removing the words wherever practicable? Any problem with including the other yellow language and deleting the gray? Okay, hearing none, we move on to page 13. Okay, on page 13, I don't, I just see one little comment from Mr. Weddleton.
To staff, did my change catch the intent or was I confused?
Well, the, we agree that it's great, it's important to provide windows, and the more window area, the better. This particular provision wasn't necessarily about just providing the windows or the window itself. It was more about the framing or the, the way the facade basically provides details below the window within its facade to create more detail in the facade itself. So I think this is a standard that's often provided in communities that require more articulation, just more articulation, even scale articulation of the wall right along the walkway and this kick plates and projecting sills. We've seen it often applied in design standards for pre-retail development elsewhere. It really refers to what's going on below the window.
Okay, that makes sense. I'm fine with that.
Are you okay with that?
Right.
Is everybody happy with the corrections, corrected language on page 13? Any other changes there? Hearing none, we move on to page 14. And I don't see any, Mr. ...
Oh, I had something there. I hate to slow it down, but I'm trying to go through the staff's packet, too, and it's not in page order, so.
Okay.
Flip through. Well, similarly, this change on 14, it sounds like neon lighting, you don't want to wrap the top in neon lighting. Now, would that preclude someone from using it? I think like University Center has it hidden, but it's a reflected light, and that looks pretty good. So is neon lighting not allowed or is just bare tubes?
The intent wasn't to disallow neon lighting. It was to disallow it as a feature that should, like, that edges the building along the roofline, along the corners, so that, kind of outlining the shape of the building in neon.
To add to that, I think an example of building, and correct me if I'm wrong, but heading north on the AC couplet where you get to the point where A and C break apart and there's that triangular property with the small sloping riff.
Little coffee shop.
The little sandwich bar place. I believe that in the winter, that's an example of a building where basically the outline of the building is just outlined in this naked neon lighting. And that is what we're concerned about, particularly with these large buildings, more so than indirect accent lighting.
Well, I wouldn't press for a big change. I think the wording to allow that, though, the University Center kind of outlines the shape of their entryways for fairly long distance, and that looks pretty good. And I wouldn't want them not to be able to do that. So if my wording meets your goal, which I believe it does, I'd recommend that change. But if anyone says no, I'm...
Ma'am Chair. There's also, I believe, there's a diner down at Wisconsin and something that...
City diner.
City diner, yes. I mean, if that were prohibited, that it would, you wouldn't have that type of, you know, sort of a 50s-type thing set up. So I think we need to be careful on what we prohibit. Now, granted, that's not a large commercial establishment, but it is a commercial establishment, so...
And it's adorable.
Yes. Food's awful, but...
While I'm technically impaired, Mr. Weddleton, how would your proposed change make it better?
Well, it allows, it does not allow bare neon tubes essentially, but you can use neon if it's used for reflected light.
Okay. Is that what the city diner is?
No, I think there is. I hadn't thought about that. But that is a bare, fairly bare tube, isn't it? Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. But I think here that you're only talking about outlining the edge of the building. It doesn't apply to decorative stuff and signs and things of that nature.
That's correct. And frankly, the likelihood of this happening for a large commercial is probably pretty slim, so you could probably just delete the whole sentence.
Yeah, I might go with that. It kind of just pops out, like, all of a sudden it's in there. Like, where'd that come from?
It probably felt like a fabulous idea five years ago.
At half-past in the morning. Yeah, I woke up and I said, "Bing." Ms. Pease? Nothing. Okay. What are we going to do about the neon lights, ladies and gentlemen? 30 seconds and your final answer.
Take it out.
Delete, okay? So we're going to delete this whole line 11 about neon tubing? Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. It's out. Anything else on page 14 before I turn the page?
Yes, ma'am chair.
Okay.
Question from staff, lines 38 and 39, say, "This subject E10,"
Oh, yeah.
"and shall not apply to uses in the vehicles and equipment use category." I don't know what subsection E10 you're referring to. And I do want to know whether there are prohibitions on vehicle sales in these large lot stores because in the previous code, vehicle sales and displays were expressly allowed. But there were some limits.
Mr. Weddleton caught the cross-reference correction that should be 5N. He caught that in his edits at the very end of his comments. And this section does expressly include vehicles, uses in the vehicles and equipment category. So this would apply to a vehicle sales use. But obviously not this section because vehicle sales kind of needs to have outdoor display.
That's what their business is all about. Okay. Okay, anything else on page 14? All right. Any objection to the yellow on there? Okay. Page 15, and I have Ms. Pe... Page 15, and I have Ms. Pease with some items there. Ms. Pease?
Yes, let me shuffle back to my notes. I think it's really only the one which we already identified, and that is that the applicability to secondary buildings needs to be consistent with whatever staff comes up in the previous section on page 11 that we flagged.
Okay. So this is all good?
Yeah, just, just flagging it, okay, to make it consistent.
So, is everybody happy with the yellow and gray language there? Mr. Weddleton, I see you're in the queue.
Quite a couple of small recommendations on page 15. On, uh, line one, I'd recommend saying the maximum size of permanent outdoor storage. Does that meet your intent?
Yep.
And then on line 21, I would add to the areas that would not be allowed for temporary outdoor display, um, I would add to that list, the community space. So 21 at the end, say, "On pedestrian walkways or sidewalks, comma, in the community space," and then continue.
Okay, is, is that it for your changes?
On 15, that's correct.
Okay. Any objection to those two changes by, uh, Mr. Weddleton? Hearing none? Any objection to the other changes on that page? Hearing none, that is true, moving on to page 16. Okay, and then I don't, Ms. Pease?
Yes, in line five, seemed to me that allowing, um, 50 percent, the optional standard allowing 50 percent of vehicle parking spaces in front of the building is not what we're trying to achieve, um, in having a building that's more an enhancement to the street or a credit to the neighborhood. I wondered what other cities allow, but I think a lower percentage, perhaps, um, what would I propose? 30 percent perhaps? Some other minimum percentage seems more appropriate. And I guess that's probably a question to staff, I mean, it, is this something that other cities allow? Credit for good design for half the parking in front of the building?
Uh, yes, this 50 percent, I believe, is used elsewhere for large retail, and the, the reason is, the purpose is, uh, that they want to wrap the parking around the building, to provide parking, a substantial amount of the parking, um, distributed around the building. It does bring it closer to the street, not necessarily to the street, but it's, it's basically looking at a, a very large building like a Walmart and encouraging the Walmart to come closer to at least one of the streets and wrap the parking lot around it. We have visited a, uh, one of the, one of the, uh, model ordinances, uh, is Fort Collins in Colorado. And, uh, we have visited, well, I have visited Fort Collins, and we visited that Walmart, and, uh, it, it really does make a difference in, in terms of the community scale, and it, uh, doesn't necessarily require a huge building to come right up to the street. Um, it, it allows space in between, in between the building and the street, and it's not necessarily a bad thing. Now, the outbuildings, the buildings in the, uh, distributed around the edge of the lot that are maybe connected to that Walmart, they are still fronting right on the street, and the parking lot's basically in between them and the Walmart, uh, and the parking lot area is shared. And, and it seems to work.
Ma'am, sure, if staff has seen this example and finds it to be a good incremental improvement, I'm okay with it, unless others-
Mr. Weddleton?
Yeah. Uh, no, I think it's, um, I think it's fine, particularly when you keep in mind that it just seems to be standard practice to sell the pads on the perimeter of these areas, so that blocks some of the parking and it's a shared parking.
Okay. Uh, and also, I think especially, there are two things, when you have the pads, you'll get less circulation of pedestrians if, uh, all of the parking is, uh, from the, those pads on the, the front side, i- if all the parking's in the back, you know, people are, they don't like to walk generally where there's not people around. I, for one, will not park on the backside of a building. I never parked in the backside of the Diamond Center, or the backside of any other, uh, building or business or shopping center. If I can't park out in the front by the street where I'm visible, I'm not there. So, I like being able to park out front. Um, and I think 50 percent is a good mix, you have people all around. Um, any problems with, anything else on that page?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Okay.
Okay, and this is, uh, specifically page 16, and looking at lines 20 through 24, I, I recommend some changes that my intent is to not, or not to change the meaning of what's there. I, I just took wording from the, um, other sections on Standards for Pedestrian Facilities and tried to use that here. That way it's a little more consistent, does that work for you guys? So, is that, everybody get that?
No, sorry.
Okay.
I'm just-
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So, page 16, line 20 through 24, and I would change, uh, so, starting at line 21, say, "Walkways a minimum of six feet, unobstructed clear width, excluding vehicular overhang, shall be provided along the full length of every building facade that has a customer entrance or abuts a customer parking lot." And add a new sentence, "Vehicle overhang shall not encroach into the minimum required walkway width or area." Which gets us to the same place. In this part, the current wording says it would be eight feet if there would be, you know, overhang from the cars, which is fine too. But this is a wording that was used in other sections that specifically dealt with sidewalk. It, and it just, and I just made it match.
Okay. Any problem with that, anyone? Staff have any objection to that? No objection from staff, okay? Anyone else have any objections?
Oh, no.
Nope, okay, so we'll substitute that from John. Okay.
Two more on that page.
Okay. 33 and 34?
Right, and there, and I kind of brought in here, recommend a change, that line 34, "Planning beds at least eight feet wide." And that's based on last week.
Mm-hmm.
Where we heard that you need eight feet for the trees to live. So here we have six feet, and I don't know that, I want the trees to live, but I don't want excessive space either. So, do we need eight feet, or is six fine?
Um, staff believes it was a good catch. The, uh, we, we checked this one at one of the sites we knew that provided that foundation landscaping, and it seemed to work well, and that was the, the University Center Mall. And, while we were looking up in the upholding-
Had to drive by.
And the, well, it seems to work well is that it is indeed eight feet wide. Uh, there was a section that is only four feet wide, and it does seem a little gentry and the trees are growing right out of the foundation. Um, so the eight feet seems to be appropriate.
I think particularly for a large, uh, uh, commercial, uh, establishment, eight feet is, um, minimal. And really with the type of landscaping that one would expect to, to put in with that type of a building. Uh, did you, uh, Ms. Pease, did you wanna comment on that one?
Yeah, I'm good.
Any, uh, okay, did you have another one after this?
Uh, another one on 16, which is very similar to the first one.
Okay. Okay, just a minute, is there any objection to the last one? Taking it up to eight feet? I don't hear any. Okay, next?
Uh, uh, change lines 39 and 40. I'm sorry, uh, just line 40, um, where it says, "Shall be a minimum of six feet, unobstructed clear width, excluding vehicular overhang." And add vehicular, "Vehicle overhang shall not encroach into the minimum required walkway width or area." And again, just to match the phrasing that's in the Standards for Pedestrian Facilities.
Okay. Is there any objection to that change? Does staff have objection? No, okay.
And, and I actually have something on page 14, I apologize, I missed.
Uh, Ms. Pease, you wanted to talk to that?
No, I had a couple other-
Okay.
Changes on 16.
Do you have more on 16?
Uh, no, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes, um, on page 16, line 32, um, the effort screening landscaping, I was concerned that with a irregular shaped lot, it could be quite a small amount of the perimeter that would qualify for this. So my proposal is that, um, the effort screening landscaping, uh, shall be provided along, and then delete the one lot line, and put lot lines that abut public streets, comma, totaling at least 25 percent of the site perimeter. So it would equal, you know, if you had a perfect square, it would equal one side, but you could bake it up and put it on different lot lines, and if you had a skinny pie-shaped lot, you couldn't get away with just putting it on the smallest side.
Okay, is there any objection to that change? I don't hear any from anyone.
Does that work for staff?
And I don't, and that includes staff?
I think so.
You think you're okay? Okay. All right, anything else on this page, Ms. Pease?
Yes, one other, um, on, uh, line 40, with the ice-free walkway, um, I propose to add a sentence that says, "This feature is not applicable for credit where the walkways and entrances are covered." And I was just trying to get the most bang for the pedestrian enhancements possible. And maybe staff has a different knowledge of how covered walkways function, but if you don't have snow and rain falling on them, it didn't seem that you needed to heat them.
Yeah. Okay, is there any objection to that addition? Any objection from staff? No, okay? That's good. Does that conclude your changes to this page, Ms. Pease? Anybody else have any more changes to that page?
Can, can we look at something on 14?
We're going back?
Yeah, well, you know, and, not to pick on, this is a great comparison, but it wasn't in order, so I missed the rooftop mechanical.
All right, just briefly. And, uh, don't anybody else get to flipping?
I, I could just bring it up, I don't have an answer for this change, but, but in there, this is page 14, lines 12 through 19. And on there it says, "The screening shall be constructed of one of the primary materials used on the primary facades of the structure." Um, did I get that right?
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, I'm worried, so if you use, um, cinder blocks or something to build your building, and you do your articulation and so on, do you want cinder blocks sitting on top of the roof to block your air conditioners and so on? And do I care? I mean, I want them blocked, I want it, so I would just, you could maybe say that and then add, "Or be of similar appearance." But you really just don't wanna look at it, and don't wanna look totally out of place. And then an extreme example would be the JL Building that has those lights. I don't think there's anything on the side, you know, the main, you know, building that looks at all like that top of it. Um, but that looks pretty cool, and everything's covered up, you know, so I-
So what are you proposing?
Um, that staff look at it and consider not requiring that the primary materials be used as screening, and consider, um, just that they be of similar appearance. I, I don't know enough about building costs or the requirements for things on tall roofs to really offer anything specific, though. I mean, if it's fenced in, maybe there's hundred mile winds up on top of that roof and it blows away.
Well, depending on the height of the building, too, there might be an issue with the wind issues and stuff, depending on the type of the material. Does anyone have a problem with making that change on page 14?
That, that guide is for you?
I'm sorry?
Did, does that give you something to run with, or?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right.
Back to 16.
Did that take care of it? Yes, are we all done with 16? I think we were. Okay, that means we're moving on to page 17, which is our last page. Yay, Ms. Pease?
Um, yes, through the chair, I'm gonna, uh, jump right in here with the applicability. First I should say, um, I know that a number of the community councils on the hillside have been very eager to see this section developed. As far as applicability goes, um, I think we need to consider the applicability, um, to be, we need to consider a little broader applicability. I'm gonna pass along, um, two photos, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. This first set of photos, there should be one for each, and it, it shows a, I guess you'd say, fabric frame type of building, or a first form, which is just about 8,000 square feet, it might be a little under. And, um, go ahead and pass those down, there's one for each, Mr. Frederick. To get an idea of how big a structure that is, there's a truck, or some kind of vehicle, parked at the entrance where I've drawn an arrow, and that gives you an idea of how big a structure, 8,000 square feet on a single, uh, floor can be. There's, um, a house over in the trees, it's not a small house, but this structure's at least twice that. And, um, you could put on something as big as this and not have this section kick in. Again, I think it's, it's right at that threshold, a little bit under. Um, and I had this person testify, the Rabbit Creek Community Council, actually, and testified that realtors told him his property value had gone down tens of thousands, I forget exactly how much. The second, and I don't know if we wanna take these one at a time, and, uh, the second, um, new threshold that I would like to add would be something to do with parking, and here I just have one set of photos. But this is for a small church, um, and it's actually, the church is surrounded by parking, they took out the vegetative screening after the cyclone was approved, and, um, I don't have a picture of the parking lot paved, just the clearing that took place. Um, but as Mr. Weddleton also noted, uh, large parking areas normally not correspond to the size of the structure. You can have a smaller structure than 8,000 square feet and have quite a bit of parking, and that is a, a big concern of, um, residents of these larger lot neighborhoods who bought the, the property with the expectation of a certain amount of privacy and less intensity. So I would like to add a standard based on, uh, parking. Or add some standards based on parking. And I should also say, I asked, um, Ms. McConnell about staff's discussion on this issue, and she said there is an accident parking code, and I don't know if I read the table yet, I did look it up, but left me as if, if you had one parking space for 20, 250 square feet, you could have 40 parking spaces, or, yeah, if I did the math right, something, 30 to 40 parking spaces before you would have to put up any screening or landscaping if you were building this, uh, structure on our six, or in our eight or 10 lot. or in R8 or R10 lot.
And what were you proposing?
So, my specific changes, um, are, um, line eight to, excuse me, line nine, to change the square footage of the structure that triggers applicability to six thousand square feet, and to add the language, okay, so we'll do like this. Where the sum of the gross square area of all structures on the lot is more than six thousand square feet, or the parking is ten or more spaces, and then continue with the existing language, and the uses on a lot zoned R6, R7, or abutting. And then also under applicability, I would add a sentence, at the end of that paragraph, it says, "The buffering and screenings setbacks shall apply among any lot boundary with R6, R7, R8, R9, and/or R10." So, it's really three changes.
Okay. Does, uh, staff have any thoughts on this?
Thank you. Um, I certainly don't disagree with the intent, but we think ten spaces is a little small. Um, the maximum parking standard is either a hundred and twenty-five percent of your minimum, or one space per two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, whichever is, uh, greater, I believe. So, an eight-thousand-square-foot structure would, at its maximum, have thirty-two spaces, and a six-thousand-square-foot structure at its maximum would have twenty-four spaces. So, that's just information to, for you to consider. At ten spaces, that would be, um, just at the minimum required parking, that would be, uh, um, a religious assembly that seats thirty, it would be a high school with two classrooms, and it would be a three-thousand-square-foot neighborhood recreation center.
What about a childcare center?
Um, I think I worked, uh, the largest childcare center would be four thousand square feet, ten spaces. Um, so, we are trying to create a balance between these uses that we've all agreed are appropriate to put into neighborhoods, that are useful to have in neighborhoods, trying to find that balance between, yes, they're okay, but where's that size where they're really getting to be too big? And I'm not saying we necessarily found the right balance, but, but in our opinion, um, having this trigger at ten parking spaces is too small.
Okay. Um, Mr. Weddleton?
Uh, you know, I, I, I appreciate these changes, I'd, I'd send in some changes that I were inferior to these, so you can ignore mine. And I looked around the hillside on Anchorage Live, which gives you a nice aerial view of a number of the churches in, in my area, and I don't think any of these are, are, not just churches, but equestrian and so on, and I don't, ten may be low, but I don't think these are really putting a big burden, because if, uh, reading, you know, the additional changes, you know, parking lots for ten to twenty vehicles shall not be located in the setbacks, so that's not really a, and essentially that's, um, the main impact on that, is that correct? By your recommendation?
Yes, and, and the, um, um, the buffer landscaping would also have to be provided, so you'd have to put in, what, I think that's twelve feet, twelve feet of landscaping, if you had a parking lot over ten spaces. So, that'd be the other effect. But, yeah, the main, the, the two main effects is that you couldn't put your parking lot right up, right now, in a R6, if you had an R6 lot and you wanted to develop it, you could put your parking right up to the lot line and you don't have to have, you could have your wheel stop on the lot line, you don't have to have any screening, any protection, um, and to have a twenty-four-car lot, presumably with a drive aisle, right on the lot line just seems like, maybe there's probably a compromise here, but, um, the idea is to require a bit of a setback, doesn't, doesn't require landscaping or anything like that, except the buffer, I mean, the L3 along the edge would be triggered, and, um, putting the parking lot back a little bit.
Okay, Ms. McConnell?
Thank you. Um, I think, I think it's a really good idea to separate, to, to have these standards for the parking lot size. Um, we're a little concerned because the R6 setbacks are quite large, um, they're twenty-five feet on the side and fifty feet in the rear, so particularly in the rear, you're basically requiring fifty feet where they can't put building, they can't put any parking. Um, we had proposed L3, which is fifteen feet of landscaping on all lot lines, um, you know, perhaps L4, which is thirty feet, would be a compromise. It actually would increase the side setback a little bit from twenty-five to thirty in the R6, but would reduce that rear setback, um, from fifty to thirty, for, just for parking, of course you couldn't put your building there, but...
Ms. McConnell, I've got to chime in here, there's a reason for those setbacks in these rural residential zoning districts, and if we have those strictly for residential uses, it only makes sense that we would especially want those setbacks there for, um, a use that's related to something that's more of a commercial or institutional nature.
Certainly, Madam Chair, the setbacks are building setbacks, though, and that any use in the R6 would still have these building setbacks, but Ms. Pease was suggesting the same setbacks be applied to parking lots.
And I'm not sure that's a bad idea, in a, because the people on the other side of the lot line are residential uses.
Sure, and I agree, it was just I feel that fifty feet in the rear may be excessive, because that's a lot alone.
Or it might make for good neighbors. What does the commission want to do? Do you, um, do you have any problems with Ms. Pease's, uh, proposed changes?
I, I don't have any problems with it, because we have the same situation out in the Chugacky River area, where primarily there are people, uh, developing, uh, horse, horse barns and riding places and a certain amount of, uh, vehicle maintenance, you know, shops and things like that, and they're set down in the middle of R6, R7 type areas, and it's appropriate, I think, to follow the, the building, I mean, a, an automobile parking lot can be just as annoying as a building, uh, especially since the automobiles tend to make a lot of noise and move around, so I would suggest that we stick with the lot setbacks that, that exist for buildings and everything else.
I, I think, especially if there's lighting in the parking lots for a safety reason, and there's activities in these facilities in the evening hours, and conversation, I don't live on the hillside, I've never lived up, uh, up there, and I've spent very little time up there at night, but I imagine it's fairly peaceful if people are sleeping with their windows open, uh, or, you know, in their yards, and conversation carries a long way, like conversation from that, from any of those parking lots. So, I'm generally a little more generous, but here I just think, I think of a parking lot just like another, a big building.
Mr. Weddleton?
Yeah, I think it just dawned on me that, uh, um, at bed and breakfast that we approved last meeting, was the last meeting, they had ten parking spots on it, is that right? Wasn't that about ten?
Yes.
I think they were totally out of the setbacks, there's plenty of room, and, so for ten, it's pretty easy on an acre and a quarter or so lot. Twenty, that might be trickier. And now, when I was looking at the map, the churches I saw seemed to have plenty of room, they could move their park, they didn't, a lot of them had their parking fairly close to the road, but it could have been moved, and as the equestrian facilities, they tended to use every bit and cut down all the trees, but they can have their paddocks and so on into the setback, is that correct? So, you know, if you were starting a new one, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, there's, uh, the large animal ordinance had a couple of different options for, um, where you could fence your paddock, and we fought against this, but basically if your neighboring lot doesn't have a home within seventy feet, a residence within seventy feet of the lot line, you can fence all the way up to your lot line. And that reminds me, I just wanted to, um, say something about Ms. Pease's proposed changes in the, um, oops, maybe they're Mr. Weddleton's. Never mind, sorry.
Okay, well, we've got a few more to get through in only twenty minutes, so we need to get moving, but we have accepted Ms. Pease's changes under applicability.
I, I have another one in applicability, if you want to hit that.
Okay.
And I would, um, propose adding a couple more uses, and that would be cultural facility, large domestic animal facility, principal, as a principal use, and utility facility. So, basically add those to line, page seventeen, line seven.
Okay, cultural, large, domestic.
Cultural facility, comma, large domestic animal facility as a principal use, and utility facilities.
Okay, is there any objection to adding those as principal uses? Okay, hearing none, those have...
Uh, yeah, I just have one question for Mr. Weddleton. The type of utility facilities I'm thinking of don't generally have what you'd call a structure that's eight thousand square feet, maybe they do exist, I guess, there's some big, big separation.
There could, there could be like the, a water tower.
That's true, yeah, a water tank, I guess.
Yeah, there could be big ones.
But this wouldn't probably cover the reservoir tanks that we see now on the hillside, I don't think.
No, but there could be, uh, you know, facilities like, uh, we saw the one, was it a conditional use out in, uh, the Acroona area for MTA's generation facility? Of course, that was an industrial and, and they didn't have any standards, uh, or a lot of standards for it.
Okay, I, I'm fine with the changes, I just didn't know whether he looked at the sizes of utilities.
I don't think Chugatch Electrical have much angst over this in here. Maybe water utility, but...
Yeah, I don't know.
And water utilities tend to put in a lot of these pump stations and stuff like that into things that look like houses, right in the middle of, of areas, of residential areas.
Moving on?
Moving on.
Okay.
Number two, relationship to other standards, anything there?
No.
Okay.
I guess I have the floor. My next, yes, my next, um, change had to do with the setbacks in lines nineteen or twenty, and I guess here I first must ask staff whether, um, I guess that's, um, a school or a religious assembly, for example, can build a structure that's over forty-five feet in height, I didn't look up the height limit in these districts, but I thought it was applicable because you could be on a PLI lot next to a residential district, and, and there's no height limit in the PLI that I know of.
That's correct, in the residential districts, the height limit would be thirty-five feet, but in the PLI, they only have to meet the, um, uh, what do we call it? The height transition, um, which this goes further then.
Okay, so, uh, my, um, proposed language would be to add to the, the height issue or height standard, this, this language, "Structures that are over forty-five feet in height shall have a solar access impact analysis, and the building mass or placement may be altered to ensure that existing solar access to adjacent lots is retained for at least four hours of sunlight on March and September twenty-first." And, um, I just wanted to emphasize that, that residencies nearby would already have to have solar access on those dates, um, and then the four hours, I think, is what's protected in the, um, previous section when commercial buildings are, are built.
Okay, does anyone have any objection to that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Since any of the lots that we're dealing with are at least a one and a quarter acre or larger, I, I can't imagine how this would gain anything quite, I mean, I, I think it's a unnecessary burden on, uh, somebody that wants to put something in. Uh, you know, you'd be hard pressed to put something on a one and a quarter acre lot that was only two or three stories tall, it would cast a shadow onto your neighbor. I, I mean, that, that's my opinion, anyway.
This, this applies to, and the staff can correct me if I'm wrong, um, this applies to lots such as PLI lands that are abutting residential zoning along more than fifty percent of their lot boundary. So, where PLIs such as Burnworth Bicentennial Park, or the PLI that was Legacy Point on the hillside, or for that matter, you know, there's the PLI APU land, where that bets up against the residential area and you have an unlimited height, um, there would need to be some protection of solar access for the residents, you know, if it's a large lot, on APU, I don't think there are any large lots alongside it, but, um, some of those other places.
Uh, where?
Well, for example, in, um, Steckigan Heights, you've got PLI parks land up against the residential areas. In, um, the properties there, where Legacy Point was proposed, one of the senior housing, that's PLI, and it's surrounded on several sides by R6, R7, and, um, I think that'd be about the only examples. So, in all, there are the parks, probably not going to have huge development like Section Thirty-Six up on the hillside, I don't think they're going to put up a ski gym, um, but it is surrounded by residential land. Schools would be another example. Don't think we have any tower schools, but, you know, private school could want to go four stories, I suppose.
Well, the applicability, though, under one, only reads R6, seven, eight, nine, ten. It doesn't say anything about PLI.
Well, the way I read it is, "Or on a lot," and I assume this means of other zoning, "with R6, R7, R8, R9, or R10 residential zoning abutting more than fifty percent of the lot boundary." So, this would give some protection to large lots that are but smaller lots, PLI, commercial, whatever exists. So, you know, maybe, maybe this is not going to ever arise, but, um, we've, you know, seen some tall buildings proposed on that Legacy Point, for example, and if they were close to the lot line, they, you know, could, could cast a big shadow. I think those are going to be fifty-five feet, or forty-five to fifty-five feet.
Okay. Are we okay with the proposed change by Ms. Pease? Hearing no dissent, we are okay with it. Next.
Okay. Um, actually, next was a parking.
Oh, new, something new for parking.
Yes, um, and the, uh, new, new section parking with three sub-sections. Um, so, first, parking lots for ten to twenty vehicles shall not be located within setbacks equal to those for the adjoining large lot residential district. So, that would begin would be if you had a PLI up against the, uh, R6, R7, and so on, you couldn't put your parking lot right up against the lot line. Parking lots for over twenty vehicles, seating zones, passenger loading zones, and/or delivery zones, shall not be located in the setbacks equal to those for the adjoining large lot residential district and must be buffered by health for screening landscaping. And third, long-term vehicle storage is not allowed within setbacks equal to those for the adjoining district. And both of those last two would, um, provide some privacy for neighbors. Then next to large parking lots for places such as schools, or places of religious assembly, where there tends to be a lot of traffic, um, moving through, uh, there's some, for example, I think there's Grace Christian Church on the hillside, it's surrounded by some, I don't know exactly what the zoning is, but residential areas, and they've got quarter student abutment, so it's five hundred in K through twelve or something. 12 or something like that. And some of these places also have their own vehicle fleet, so long-term vehicle storage or parking wouldn't be allowed right up against the lot line, which without this you could...
Okay. Just a minute, I've got a couple people here in the queue. Mr. Whittleton?
I had one minor addition to the Roman numeral three, III, and changed that to read long-term and fleet vehicle storage. You're not really storing your buses, but that would be, I think, fleet vehicles.
Would that be okay with you, Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Eichmann and Ms. McConnell.
Okay, Ms. Pease, I assume that you reasoned that in five, I, where you say 10 to 20 vehicles, ties in with your applicability where we say your other parking is 10 or more spaces. Is that why you picked 10?
Yes.
Okay. So in other words, if you have nine vehicles, it doesn't apply?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. McConnell.
On line number three, I was just going to suggest the reading of words, long-term vehicle storage is defined as anything more than, I believe it's 72 hours, and the phrase long-term could confuse it, you know, do you mean longer than that?
Yeah, that's good. So should it say vehicle storage and fleet parking? That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any objection to that?
Well, I wanted to offer something there, just to address something that Ms. McConnell had said, is here we say vehicles should not be located within the setbacks equal, can we say, like, for 10 to 20 vehicles, just add adjoining lots should be buffered with L3 landscaping? Just to minimize that distance a little, I would know we discussed that somewhat.
I'm not quite sure you understand it, there's L4 buffering landscaping would be provided along all lot lines.
Do you have that in there?
It's in the next sentence.
Well, I guess to let them park in the setback as long as there's, you know, it wouldn't be up to the lot line because they have the landscaping, but it wouldn't be taken up 50 feet at the back either.
Um, I think for any vehicle parking lot, it's a lot to have 15 feet away from the lot line. So, but go ahead and try it again, your proposal is that parking lots for up to 20 vehicles could be located within the setbacks as long as you did?
Well, parking, say, say it'd be parking lots for 10 to 20 vehicles, shall be buffered with L3, shall be buffered with L3 landscaping. Period?
Um, no, because I'm not comfortable with that. They're not a, your lot line's 50 feet, and if all of a sudden you can have a parking lot, 20 vehicles, 15 feet from that lot line, that's a major change in your expectations.
Yeah, okay, I withdraw that.
Is everybody okay with the proposed new section five that Nancy offered, the section about parking? Yes, yes. Yes, yes, and yes. Okay, that's added. Now we have the old section five buffers.
Yes, Madam Chair, just wanted to add to the end of that, except as provided elsewhere in this section, because some of the new language provides L4.
Is there any objection to adding that language? Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just for clarity, could we move the sentence from the applicability, the last sentence, the buffering and screening setbacks? I mean, that's, is that talking about landscaping up in the applicability?
No, this is a whole separate paragraph from applicability. Applicability was paragraph one.
Right, but I guess I'm unclear, I was thinking that the last sentence in the applicability was talking about landscaping, and I was suggesting that we just put in section, in the buffer section, L3 buffer landscaping shall be provided along any lot boundary with R6, R7, R8, R9, or R10.
Okay.
So I don't understand where else provided in this section, it says you don't have to do this.
Well, there's L4 in Commissioner Pease's recommendation, there's L4 recommended in the new section five for parking.
Well, let me ask you a question the other way, what harm will it be adding her proposed language on there?
I'm just, I'm confused, and so I'm just trying to make it clear so that we can implement it properly. Well, so the intent is that none of the landscaping requirements would apply if it wasn't along a lot line with a residential lot. Is that correct?
Yes. So if you have a PLI lot, and it borders a freeway on one side, and R6 or R7 or R8 on the other three sides, you wouldn't have to, I guess I'm thinking about that.
Okay, now, but tell me, do you have to put L3 buffer landscaping along the freeway?
I understand.
Okay, I think I can get it.
Well, actually, I think I, we can get there more simply. If we take the existing language and just say, a minimum of L3 buffer landscaping shall be provided along all lot lines. That meets your intent, where it says to do L4, you would do L4, and this just says that would be the minimum.
Yes, that it does, that works for me, but what it does is, so you've got that PLI Legacy Point parcel, you would have to put L3 landscaping where it abuts R3, so maybe some condos go in on R3, you still have to put your buffer landscaping along that R3 if it's a minimum, because on the other side of the PLI, you've got R6. So if you board the R6 anywhere, it means you've got a buffer all the way around your lot, and I don't think that was the intent of this, I think the intent of this is to protect the larger lots. Does that make sense?
May I suggest adding the R6, R7, R8, R9, R10 language from the last sentence of the applicability into line 22, keeping the except as provided elsewhere in this section and deleting the last line in the applicability? Because buffering and screening setbacks isn't really the phrase that we use. I think that does, so you're just saying, so line 22 would read, L3 buffer landscaping shall be provided along our lot lines, along any lot boundary with R6, R7, R8, R9, or R10, except as provided elsewhere in this section.
And then delete that.
And then delete that line 11, remove language on line 11.
That works? Okay, is everybody happy?
Well, should you say a minimum of L3, or is that already implied when you say L3?
That's already implied, yeah.
Is everybody happy now? Okay. Moving on to the last one.
All right, Madam Chair. Actually, the, did you have any changes to that one, did Mr. Whittleton?
I'm done.
Okay, I have two new proposals, which are in my notes, and I need a little help with these. Architecture features are screened for large facades. And I'm not worried to these numbers, but to the concept, anyway. My current wording is, facades longer than 100 feet that face residential lots or public streets shall have facade articulations, I put at least every 50 feet, as in one of the previous sections we discussed, 107, 120, E5C, 1011. Or level four landscaping along the lot lines with not more than 20% interruption for entrances. And the idea there was, say it's a school, and you've got a gym that's 200 feet long, I don't know how long gyms are, but certainly up at service, you can picture the pool building, or there's a freestanding aluminum gym, it's just an aluminum cube, and you're going to need to put some facade articulations on it or buffer, or rather put screening up between that and the residences. And I guess what's missing in that is how close to the, how close to the lot line are you, because I suppose it could be along buildings hidden by smaller buildings as well.
Mr. Whittleton?
I think you'd meet your intent more closely if, instead of requiring level four screening around the lot, particularly in the case with service high, because that building is so far away from the lot line, but if you required foundation landscaping, similar to what we've done in some other sections, that would help that building.
Okay. So, yeah, that's, that sounds acceptable.
Well, that's just the start, what kind of foundation landscaping? Six feet, eight feet wide with one point per foot?
There you go, what we've provided for the commercial foundation landscaping, I think.
We don't like to pick the trees.
So, this is the secretary, wanted to restate that. Facades longer than 100 feet that face residential lots or public streets shall have facade articulations at least every 50 feet, as in section 107, 120, E5C, smaller than 111. Or foundation landscaping. And I would just ask you to refer to the dimensions that we approved in section 120 so that it's the same. But it was basically eight foot width, 1.0 landscape units, I think, per 100 foot, and along most of the foundation wall.
Okay.
And that would be on the, what's that? The whole, the whole wall. By the way, that we approved the language already, it should be the same.
Does staff wish to weigh in on this?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am, okay. Is there any objection to adding this section? I don't hear any objection. Next and last.
Next and last, a new section, fabric structures. And before I read the proposed language, I guess I should say, fabric structures were prohibited entirely in the commercial district large development standards that we just approved. I'm not sure exactly what the thinking was, but my thinking in the impact of fabric structures on a residential area is that they tend to have no fenestration, meaning no windows, no eyes on the neighborhood, and they tend to have no architectural features, they're basically a large marshmallow or balloon. And you can have, as we saw in the photos I passed around, an 8,000 square foot, well, I guess it would be a 6,000 square foot, dump type building, which can reduce your property value and your view. So I'm thinking that if there's a feeling that these are, you know, not the kind of large structures that alter the neighborhood, there could be some smaller version that would be appropriate. And I proposed this language, fabric structures. Floor-supported, arch-supported, or inflated tensioned fabric or membrane structures may not exceed 15 feet in height. My thinking is that that would allow religious assembly and recreation type places to put up these, these buildings, the sort of camp buildings, they might be temporary, for example.
Okay, Ms. McConnell?
Thank you. I wanted to point out, we didn't completely neglect the residential districts on this issue. Back in chapter five, when we were dealing with accessory uses, we proposed banning these types of structures from residential districts, but the assembly ended up doing was banning them from your Class A districts, so your smaller lot districts, and your Class B districts, which are these large lot districts we're discussing, they allowed them, but required them to have twice the setbacks of regular structures. And now I have to think out loud a little bit here, so that means you can have an accessory fabric structure of, that can be quite large, particularly if it's associated with a large domestic animal use, that it would have to be set back twice your underlying district setbacks. We didn't really consider the concept of having your principal use be a fabric structure because we were definitely thinking about, you know, residential districts, nobody's really going to live in an inflated dome, we would assume, and that also leaves kind of the PLI hanging out there. I think the 15-foot height is a really good way to control their size, but I think what I would ask you to do is to clarify what your intent is, and then let me work on where it needs to go, because we might not capture what you want to do necessarily under this section, and I might need to propose adding it to some other parts of code, depending on what your intent is.
That would be fine, to sort of give the intent, and maybe Mr. Whittleton can help me. I think the intent is to diminish the visibility from neighboring residencies, and to just avoid having the fabric structure become the dominant structure on the lot. Do you see these as being principal structures over? In the photo that I passed around, it, there is a residence on the site, but there is about an 8,000, almost 8,000 square foot arena, and next to it is a 2,500 square foot one, and that's where your eye goes. They're definitely, from a purpose, perspective of scale, they're the principal structures.
But not, in that situation, not legally.
Oh, okay.
I have to do in my neighborhood, not legally. Mr. Whittleton?
I think now, adding it to this section would only apply to non-residential uses, so if it's a lot that has a home on it, like you have here, this would not apply in that case. Is that right? Because we're dealing here with, someone's got a lot and he's doing something non-residential, so an equestrian facility, where that's their main use, couldn't use this. But it wouldn't stop, in this section, it wouldn't stop what you have here.
Sorry I didn't follow your...
The picture that you showed us, this is someone's home and they covered their arena with this canopy or tent.
Right.
And adding this restriction in this section, though, is only for non-residential uses. It's like, so in an equestrian facility, if that's their main thing, not using the lot for residential, then they couldn't do it. But if someone had a home and that's their main use of their lot, and they added this, they'd be okay.
Or if it's a home occupation.
Right, this doesn't diminish, well, home occupation, it wouldn't work, I don't think, because it, you'd only do 250 square feet, though, or something, 400, maybe.
So much percentage of your main residence.
That'd be a mighty big house for this.
Yeah, well, no, of your, of your residence for, you can only use so much of your residence, but I have a, I have a home occupation in my neighborhood that has two fabric-built structures on their lot. I have another one that has two that are end to end. So I have this long skinny building going, and this is a resident, it's a house, it's a private residence, but they put all their antique cars in it. It's very clever. Anyway, so...
Um, anyway, so I guess you can put it wherever you want. Is there any objection to adding this last one? I don't hear any. Okay, we need to come out of the committee of the whole.
Madam Chair, I thought that what we discussed was that, um, staff would try to decide where to.
Where to put it.
Okay, based on the intent of reducing the visibility and dominance.
Correct.
Okay.
That's what my understanding was.
I would just say one more thing. I don't know if these structures come in increments. I'm conscious of this.
They come in strips.
I, I used to sell them. And, uh, they do come in kits, usually about 20 feet long.
Mm-hmm. Well, I guess, just what I was getting at was, when we were doing the residential design, you counseled us, Mr. Frederick, to think in increments of four, so if there's some, you know, if you don't make 15 footers, they're always 12, 16, it's a minor point.
Yeah.
This, this, this height that you're talking about would be the peak heights, and you can get pretty big things with a 15-foot. The common ones I used to sell were usually about, they were eight foot at the, at the eaves, and they were about 10 or 12 feet at, at the ceiling, so.
They can have quite a bit of square foot.
Lot, lot square foot. I had seven of them all hooked together.
I think you can go ahead and do it, and get up on the roof and work on it.
Yeah.
Except the 15 footer, so I think that's a generous height.
Okay, are we ready to come out of the committee of the whole?
As I move.
I thank you, Mr. Frederick, for the second. Is there any objection to coming out? Hearing none, okay. Now it would be timely to have a motion to accept the work of the committee.
Madam Chair, move to approve, uh, the changes and the items that we have approved while in the committee of the whole for, uh, the rewriting of chapter, uh, seven of Title 21.
Okay, and, thank you, and Ms., I have Ms. Pease up here also. And, um, do you care to speak to the motion?
Madam Chair, I think that we've, uh, worked through this, uh, we've reached compromises in certain areas, and we've made, uh, logical decisions, uh, based on, um, the area, uh, where the, that it applies to, and that, uh, we, uh, we're ready to, ready to approve it.
Okay, Ms. Pease, do you have anything to say?
Just very quickly to say that I think we, um, in this section have addressed some key construction or, um, architectural-type standards that will make a much more livable city. Um, and with regard to the new section, um, large establishments in non-residential areas, I think we are answering a clearly voiced need and frustration for people that live in those areas with the, um, impacts of, of large establishments going next door to them. We've had a number of cases before this body where we had a very large turnout of people who were trying to hash out mitigation step by step, and by putting this, um, these standards in place, I think we, we save some neighborhood angst, some developer angst, and some administrative time, so I think it's very timely.
Thank you. Mr. Whittleton, did you?
Yeah, a couple of points there. One is that, uh, as we go through these, these changes make, um, everything more prescriptive, which isn't always looked on fondly, but, um, we've heard that that meets a need that the staff has, um, found in, in dealing with the ordinances that exist now. And, and I'd like to also, to this section, uh, 21.07, 130B, uh, is a very important new addition that meets a lot of the problems that we have, certainly in the Hillside area.
Okay, any further comments? Um, I want to thank particularly Ms. Pease and Mr. Whittleton for your diligent work on the committee, and also, uh, Mr. Eichmann, your hard work in the, your review and offering comments. And thank you to staff for sticking with it, and for getting, uh, the additional materials to us. The chart today was particularly helpful, and we received that, the comparison. Um, and thank you. And you, I appreciate you keeping your comments concise tonight, we needed to get through this. Um, I'll just make a quick announcement, I think most of you heard me, we do have new planning commissioners appointed. Uh, Rick Morrison, and what's the woman's name again?
Stacy Dean.
Yes, Stacy Dean, she's been, uh, served three years on the plating board, so it won't be a new environment to her to, uh, join us. Their names will be introduced at the Assembly tomorrow night, and will be up for, uh, consideration by the Assembly after meeting on the 25th, and will be hopeful that they will be, uh, confirmed. And if so, they will join us at our meeting on the 31st.
I don't think we.
No, I haven't gotten there yet.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just grown, I'm just hungry. Anyway, I just thought the meeting was all, I thought we were all done. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any further discussion of our motion before I lose it totally? No, any objection? I don't hear any. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Secretary, for, my blood sugar level is way too low.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You'll probably be disappointed to hear that I have one more thing, which I hope can just take a few minutes. Um, and first, I would like to say thank you all of you for all your work on this section in Title 21.
Better not.
I will refer you to the last page of the memo that we sent to you last week, it's dated August 10th, it has E1 on the top. The last page is about multiple residential structures on a lot. If you recall during the residential section, we reserved this, um, in order to bring a proposal to you, uh, this month. And this is, you know, to apply standards, what we generally think of as site condos. And I have to tell you, staff and, I know some of the commissioners we've discussed, particularly the ones that served on the residential committee, we've really, really, really struggled with this issue, um, what are the appropriate standards for this type of development? And we've looked at a lot of other communities, and basically determined that other communities do not allow this type of development without some sort of oversight that is very similar, and often called a PUD process. So what we are proposing, and Mr. Frederick and I were talking earlier, and would agree that, you know, pretty much everyone does agree that the site condos were a loophole in, in our existing code. So what we are proposing is to say that if you want to do multiple residential structures on a lot, that you go through the PUD process. That said, we recognize that there are some changes that should, if this were the, the path that we are going to go forward, there are some changes to the PUD process that would help this, make it, um, better for everybody involved. And so what I would ask you to do tonight is, if you feel comfortable in the next couple of minutes, give us a concept approval with the direction of going forward, looking at the PUD section, which is back in chapter three, which has been provisionally approved already, but, you know, we can certainly offer changes, and have us work on the PUD process and bring it back to you, um, to further discuss this item.
Well, I'm probably the only one here that has a significant experience with the PUD process from sitting here. And years ago, we used to have fair amount of PUD applications, because a lot of the early, um, condo projects we had here in town were developed as planned unit developments. There was, over close to where I lived, there was the Woodlands East and the Woodlands West, and then it changed its name. But they were developed in phases, often, and, uh, the, you know, I would wholeheartedly recommend that. You have some control over it while it's developing, and, uh, and, um, and oversight with regard to the, the buildings, the landscaping, the open space. Uh, the major problem, and I, with some of this, was the private streets versus public streets. In those, we had private streets, and they were built poorly, they fell apart, and the government ended up going in and fixing them and owning them, I think, on some of these projects. But PUD, in my opinion, is the way to go. Uh, Mr. Whittleton, you've been in the queue for a long time. Did you have talk, or did I just ignore you?
Well, I had a point at closing, but then, I, I think what you're saying, since that hasn't happened yet, you're saying that you're going to rework these and bring them back to us for the PUDs?
We're going to rework the PUD section in chapter three, so there would be no further changes to the residential section, except for a line that says, "If you want to do multiple structures on a lot, you have to do it through the PUD." It would require changes to chapter six, the dimensional standards tables that say whether you can do more than one principal structure on a lot, and then it would be changes to chapter three. And if, if you guys are generally comfortable with exploring this concept, we can bring the chapter three changes back to you, but that means that the Assembly can move forward with the chapter seven residential stuff as kind of a whole.
I, it sounds good to me.
Mr. Frederick, are you in my queue? Thoughts?
Okay, I'll try not to reiterate anything that's already been said, but clearly, there needs to have, to be some oversight in this particular area of, of development. Um, I, I guess, though, we just, and if it's going to be PUD, clearly there are some changes that need to be made to chapter three, because, for example, now it says, "PUD is at, is at least two acres." Well, it probably wants to be smaller than that. Um, and the question is how small, and, and what, and, and also, what are the levels which may be, um, uh, public site plan review versus, I'm sorry, versus administrative? Um, and there are probably some level in there, the 12 or something like that, that may be a distinction there.
And we.
That's the sort of thing I think they need to work on, and, and we, and I'd be really, really happy to, to work on with them.
And I'd be happy to work on it with you, too. I, one of the reasons that it fell out of favor in the past, it was, it was too cumbersome for petitioners, and it was also burdensome for staff. And for everyone, it was a very convoluted process, so we, and I think we have some tools now that we didn't have then, where we could streamline it, and, uh, and still have adequate oversight. But I would be more than happy to, to work, uh, with you on it. And I know there are staff in the zoning, uh, section that have, you know, have a lot of experience with it. Is there any objection to, um, going forward with that concept? I don't hear any objection. I think it's, it's, um, mandatory that we have, um, a, a solution to managing that type of development.
Thank you very much. I, I think we really benefit from the knowledge and experience of, of people on the commission and people on the staff, and we'll arrange some sort of committee meeting or something, so thank you.
You also have a very good resource within the municipal stream of things. Now Greg Jones has a high level of knowledge about PUDs, very high level of knowledge. Mr. Whittleton, you were going to add something at the end.
Well, this is a brief comment, and I really miss having, um, Commissioner Phelps and Yoshimura here. And I don't know what you could do, but maybe in these packets, when it's been a long time since the public hearing, remind people what they might want to review before they come, because they really could have added quite a bit with their experience on this.
They certainly could have. Uh, and, uh, we're, I'm being a positive thinker, that we're going to have our new commissioners by the 31st, so you need to get the word back, whoever is handling the Hillside District Plan, that we need to be sure to get the tapes and all materials out to them early enough so that they can, uh, review it. They should be confirmed on the 25th, and as soon as that happens, that needs to get out to them.
We must probably be in, you know, just on that public alone line.
Have you?
Oh, we do.
Okay. Well, we're ready to adjourn if, oh, the 20th, when we have our meeting with the director. One of the people that will be there is, uh, Mr. Kneefel, our traffic engineer, to talk about our concerns that were raised during the Walmart hearing about traffic issues, so. And then we're going to be talking about our upcoming schedules and more Title 21 things, and stuff related to the transition with, since the new mayor. Motion to adjourn.
Removed.
Thank you, and thank you, and is there any objection? Hearing none, we're adjourned. And, Miss Madam Secretary, thank you for inviting me to have everyone vote on the motion.
There it is, that's a spaller.
Yes.
On our parliamentary.
Yes, because at this time.
You got a person.
Yeah, well, I, uh, did meet dinner today, and I has had a tiny little half a static for lunch, and, and I'm just running on empty.
I have, I have a ham.
No, I'm fine, I'm going to go home in a minute, but I have to, I.